Oh yes, oh yes, oh yes. This meeting of the Sumner County Commission is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this honorable commission and Sumner County.
I have asked that Commissioner Baker ring lead us in an invocation tonight.
Bow your heads, please. Gracious God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain which helps things to flourish. But we ask your protection for those in the Pigeon Forge area who have been hurt by flooding, as well as other places. We ask that you keep us grounded in your word and that you remind us daily that we are here to serve the people and not ourselves. Ask this in Christ's name, amen.
Would you remain standing for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, call the row.
May the commission record your presence.
All right, we're showing 24 people present this evening and, as you might assume, that will be a majority of 13 votes and two-thirds, 16. Commissioner Cho.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I've got a few things I would like to submit for adding to the agenda. Item one is just, this is just kind of a clerical thing, just to be super picky on it, but this is just to vote to provide direction to the Finance Director to publish the budget as directed by our private acts for both the schools and the county, so actually direct him to publish that. The second one is providing $100,000 towards security camera for parking garage. The third one is carryover funds for greenway repairs, $44,650. And the fourth one is carryover funds for the Brown Park. I'd like to submit those four for, the last one being discussion.
All right. If you will, let us know the first one and we'll vote on that. Add it to the agenda?
Yep, Ms. Chairman, I apologize. There was one item I forgot here, and this is directive to the county, or directive to provide additional funding for continued operations in Millersville. That one we may have to shut down if we don't provide that.
All right. Go back to number one, please.
Okay. Number one, publish the budgets, both school and county. Direction to our Finance Director.
All right, motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, and you will add, you want that added to budget?
Yes, all of these would go to budget.
All right.
The second one is providing $100,000 for security cameras for the parking garage.
All right. Motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Third?
The third one is carryover funds, $44,650 toward greenway repairs.
Okay.
It's carryover funds from last year to this year, $44,650 for greenway repairs.
Motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
That one probably needs to go to the board.
Let's just put that on the board.
Just to add to the agenda.
Yes, let's not do that now. All right, go ahead. Wait. We're going to add this to the agenda because I could not determine who, where the voice vote was going with that.
We have a call for division, Ms. Chairman.
All right, Madam Clerk.
May the commission record your vote.
Fifteen to nine, it does carry.
Item number four is carryover, well, this is discussion for carryover line items. One point six, excuse me, 1.1 million in total for, toward Brown Park.
All right, motion?
Second.
Motion and a second?
And I just would note on this one that this one is not new funding, it's carryover funding.
All in favor?
Ms. Chairman, point of order. This is currently in committee. It got referred from General Operations in June to Budget. For some reason, wasn't on the Budget Agenda, so it's still in committee, therefore you'd have to have 16 votes to discharge this from committee to bring to the floor.
I'm going to have to defer not to his opinion, but advice on this, such as a lawyer, because in my opinion, a commission can vote to do what it pleases with a majority. But, Mr. Attorney, what is your opinion on that?
This is, this was supposed to be on July's budget, but we were dealing, we were so deep into the budget that it was asked that it be pushed to August, and this was out of the June 3rd Gen Ops meeting. So it is technically in committee, so it would need to be discharged out, so you need a two-thirds.
All right. I will accept what the attorney says. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That does not carry.
Okay.
May I ask the maker of the motion why he would like to add it for discussion?
No, it's a dead issue now. Okay, go ahead.
No one called for a division of the House. It was obviously not, did you call for a division? You know, after, just like the same sequence of the before, we had a bunch of days, we had a few days, some called a division.
All right, let's have, it was pretty obvious to me, but go ahead, let's have a division of the House on that.
May the commission record your vote.
Twelve twelve, does not pass. All right, go ahead.
The last one is appropriating continuing funds for, toward Millersville, for our continuing EMS operations out there.
All right. Do I have a motion and a second?
Some moved.
Second. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries. So everyone will add those to your budget and we'll make sure our chairman sees us through that when it comes to budget. Do I have a motion? Well, we need, in addition to that, we need to remove number two under Report of the Chair. That is not going to be available this month. I think that was all, Mr. Attorney, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have set the agenda. Approval of minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and we have approved the minutes. Consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to extend.
All right. Consent agenda, motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'd like to request that item number two, 240702 and 240706 be removed from the consent agenda.
To remove number two?
Yes, sir. 240702.
And number six?
Yes, sir.
And place that back under budget?
Yes, sir.
Do you have that, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Cho?
Just sort of moving forward certain projects earlier?
Yes.
And 2006.
And six. All right, with that, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Before we do recognition of the public, let me say, I was optimistic when I came tonight. I really thought this was going to be a short meeting, but I think I misread that. That happens occasionally, but someone said before we started that, oh, I think it was in the prayer, that we stay grounded. That's a good term, let's stay grounded tonight. I hope that if anybody gets off and does a lot of bird walking, that someone will call a point of order. When we did that before, we moved right along a lot more quickly. So let's not do a lot of bird walking, let's get the business done, the county's business, and get out of here. Okay, recognition of the public. Could Steve, could you? This is a regular agenda items. Dennis Schroder? Come right up here, Mr. Schroder. You have five minutes.
I promise I won't take five minutes. Thank you very much. My name is Dennis Schroder and I'm here to express my interest and desire to serve on the County Library Board. I live in, have lived in Sumner County for 10 years. I've been in White House for eight of those years. I'm a retired Army officer. I run a small nonprofit that I started here five years ago. I have served on various different boards, both in the for-profit and nonprofit arena for probably a combination of 15 years. And I think that my management and leadership and service to the nation and to the organizations I've been a part of are the things that I bring to that position if I'm accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner Pascal Jovens, 3035 Long Gole Park, doctor, murderers. I see someone who's not really smart and all we're missing is a troll. So I made sure that, you know, someone who needs some love got his troll.
Ms. Charlena O'Millar?
Thank you.
Ms. Charlena O'Millar?
Hi, I'm Charlena O'Millar at 143 Rule and Circle, Hendersonville, Tennessee, 37075. I don't have any things to give you or presents or any jokes to make at anybody's expense. I'm just up here to say that my only goal is to have good government, and I wholeheartedly believe that the 24 of you ran to have good government too. Now, many of you guys were new whenever you first got elected, and it's been two years, so you should know better by now when you guys are letting somebody else make all the decisions for you. The Committee on Committees is up for election tonight, and I hope that you will nominate and vote people in that will be independent thinkers, take each decision and think rationally about it, gather all the information about it, try to have conducive discussions to think about the various perspectives around it, instead of just sliding things through, like almost every committee member and every board member has been done since you guys took office. You're halfway through your term. I really, really hope that you'll please consider each and every person that you guys are putting on the Committee on Committees. As for the library board member, I have nothing against the person that has been here, but I am going to just reiterate what I've said each time that a library board member has come up, and that is that there have been a lot of people that have applied, and I don't think that anybody else has been considered. This is one of the problems that I do see with the Committee on Committee process that has been happening thus far. And you can tell me that this is how it's always been, but I do believe that a lot of you ran to try to change things for the better, so I don't care how it was done before, I care how it's done now. Thank you.
If you'll hand me the other sheet. Thank you. This is on the Planning Commission 2024-01. Mr. Belcher, is it?
First, on a sidebar, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. John Belcher, 2003 Hawkwell Circle, Hendersonville. Recently, I was appointed to the Planning Commission, and I have had some exposure to some of the things that you folks have to deal with and go through, and I just want to offer my sincere thanks for each one of your services to that, because I had no idea how involved it was. Other than that, for tonight's agenda, I just want to voice my favoritism for item 07 and 08 that was put before the Planning Commission a couple of months ago now. I think it's a good plan for Sumner County, and I hope that you adopt it. Thank you for your time.
Tracy Finnigan?
My name is Tracy Finnigan. I live at 737 Shun Pike in Cotton Town. I'm speaking in favor of item 24070708 in reference to Resolution 2024-01 and 2024-02, which would raise the minimum lot size to 100,000 square feet, which is 2.3 acres. So I've lived in Sumner County for 31 years. I love Sumner County. I don't think there's any county in Tennessee that I would rather live. For 10 years, I've had my eye on Cotton Town, living in the country of Cotton Town, it was a dream for 10 years. I realized that dream three years ago. I have five acres. I've kept bees for 12 years. I know a lot of, you know, beekeepers and people with land, and it's a, it's a lifestyle that I could only live on five acres, not less than 2.3. For a short time, while I looked for land, I lived in Hendersonville on a third of an acre. I had four beehives. My neighbor built a pool right behind me. Thank goodness I was moving, because it wouldn't have been responsible for me to have, you know, 200,000 bees close to a pool. And you just can't have that lifestyle. I grow my own fruits and vegetables, I raise potatoes, onions, I'm learning to homestead. This is not something I can do on less than 2.3 acres. I've been in the mortgage business here for 20 years, especially the last 10 years. So many people come to me and their dream is land. I want to build a house, what do I need to do? I want to build a house, I'm buying here in the city for now, but this is my ultimate dream. They want land. We need, when I first moved here, there was empty space between Gallatin and Hendersonville, and it was beautiful. The rolling hills, it was no fences, it was beautiful. And Gallatin is beautiful, Hendersonville is beautiful, I'm near White House now, I love it. Those are cities, those are towns. The empty space between those towns is the country. And it's a lifestyle for people who want to live in the country. Horses, goats, I know people with farm animals and homesteads, and it is a lifestyle that I'm embracing, many of my friends and neighbors embrace. There's gunshots all the time, I love every moment of it. You can't do that on one acre, on 40,000 square feet, so I am in favor of this, let's have some city and let's have some country. And I'm in favor of this because it saves the country. Once this land is gone, once you've put up a subdivision, that land is gone, it's gone, you can't get it back. You really can't. I suppose it's conceivably possible, right? Bulldoze houses and get it back? But you really can't get it back the way that it was. And so let's have some minimum size lots to, for people to have that lifestyle. Not everyone can live in Cotton Town, there's plenty of other places where people can live, and that's how it should be. You know, we don't, do we really want it to be just one subdivision after another? I mean, look, drive down Gallatin Road, between Gallatin and Hendersonville, it's just one, one structure after another. And let's preserve the green space, so I'm in favor of these. Thank you so much for your time and for all you do.
Thank you. Steve Culver?
My name's Steve Culier, 153 Brandon Mill in Gallatin. I'm just up here for the 240707, the resolutions 2024-01 and 2024-02, I'm in favor of that. I moved out, I've been here almost seven years, bought in the country, I like the country, I like the wide open spaces. I don't want to see this, the density that they're talking about, they're proposing, so I'm very much in favor of this resolution passing. Thank you very much for your time.
Ron Straw?
My name is Ron Straw, 1238 Rock Springs Road, Bethpage, Tennessee. Currently, in one of the most recent additions, as a proud member of the Sumner County Regional Planning Commission, but tonight I wear another hat. I want to talk to you for just a moment about somebody who wears a hat that proudly represents being a resident and land owner in Sumner County, that strongly recommends approval and passage of Resolution 2024-01, 2024-2. Now, it's important that we understand, and some of the people in the audience, that these resolutions run parallel, they run parallel with, and complements and validates the 2035 Sumner County Comprehensive Plan that was passed by another visionary commission in 2010. So that's important that we take a look at this. These two resolutions closes and links together, making sure that we run on a parallel track to do the things that we already said we were going to do back in 2010. Now, in reflection of the chairman's sincere comments to remain grounded tonight, I'm going to be short, be sweet, and be gone. I have a saying, work hard, play hard, serve often. I'd like to thank Mayor Isbell, the chairman, the full-time county staff, and the current commission for their tireless endeavors to improve county government for the people. My name is Ron Straw and many other silent others from Castan Springs and the Bethpage area who are getting ready tonight to start an early morning going to work. We support this message and resolutions. Thank you for your time.
Wally Carson?
I live at 397 Brandon Mill Road. I've been a resident of Sumner County for 50 years. I ran a business in this county for 40 years. Some of you may know of the Lone Ranger, we did treatments. I always expected to get a share of growth, but I like regulated growth. I don't want it to be where it takes over all the landscaping of Sumner County. And I want to say tonight, I am in favor of the zoning code resolutions 2024-01 and 2024-02. This kind of keeps Sumner County where it still has that beauty and attraction, but does offer some opportunity for growth. I'm not against growth, I'm just against slamming everything together, and I want to see this resolution pass. Again, my name's Wallace Carson.
Kevin Begert?
Kevin Begert, 424 AB Wade Road. I'm speaking in favor of Planning Commission Resolution 2024-01 and 2024-02. First of all, I've sat through a lot of meetings, including a lot of the recent planning meetings, and I think the diligence that you folks have done is astonishing, astonishing. To take into account all of the various issues that this encompasses, you've done a great job with it. You baked in ways for people to kind of go around or get, you know, approval on things, so it wasn't a one and done kind of thing, so kudos for you folks to do that. But the main reasons why I'm in favor of this are twofold. First of all, for years and years and years, 10 years at least that I've been here, 12 years, we always hear about all the problems with runoff, excessive runoff and all that kind of stuff. Well, that's a direct correlation to growth in building and putting hardscapes on land that percolates at a very poor rate as it is, which kind of runs into the second issue here. In general, we have clay soil which doesn't perk very well. Most of our rural residences are on subsurface sewer treatment, in other words, septic systems. With, with poor perk rates and poor, you know, clay soils, it's just a matter of time before you start having systemic faults and problems. And when that happens, now you have to dig it up and find a reserve area, and all of a sudden, five acres all goes down very quickly where you can't put another septic system. And then you start putting engineered system, and you're talking lots and lots of money. But the issue of runoff also is a function, or affects the entire county. We've heard about all these projects that we're talking about to try to mitigate runoff in various areas of the county, and it's going to cost hundreds, if not millions of dollars, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars to fix. Why don't we just fix it right up front? And I think you've done a great job with that, with the larger lot sizes, but also allowing homeowners to own that land to work out deals with y'all. So I think you've done a great job and I applaud you for it. Thank you.
Ken Wentworth?
My name is Ken Wentworth. I live at 399 Brandon Mill Road. I won't take up a lot of your time, I'm here to speak in favor Amendment 2024-01 and 2024-02. We presently live on 11 acres on Brandon Mill Road, and a lot of people buy property for what's there. We bought property for what's not there. I grew up in the city, I grew up in the traffic area, I grew up in an area that overdeveloped prime agricultural land. It was the fastest growing area in my state, in the country, and they paved over prime agriculture areas for housing developments. When things were developed, they decided, or they discovered the highways weren't adequate. The last 10 years of my commuting to work, I spent at least an hour a day sitting on the freeway in traffic problems. We, I bring this up because we have a problem with 31, and we're developing, I believe, overdeveloping on 31 to a point where it's become very dangerous. So in light of this, I think it's, things that attracted me to where I live now are the open space, the things like deer that we see in our yard. I told some friends recently, I said, "You won't believe what I saw walking across the street." And they were amazed, and I said, "A red fox walked right across the street in front of my house." And they looked at me like I was crazy. Red foxes are pretty common out here, apparently, not where I'm from. Anyway, in closing, you know, Anyway, in closing, you know, I'm a high school graduate. I, I had a couple, couple of years of automotive education, but I'm blessed to live on eleven acres in a beautiful state of Tennessee because I got up every day and I went to work, and I didn't overspend my money. And I'm very loyal to this state. So thank you for your time. 2024-01 and 2024-02 is, got my vote. Thank you very much.
Brenda Wentworth.
My name's Brenda Wentworth, and I live at 399 Brandon Mill Road in Gallatin. And I am in favor of the 2024-01 and 2024-02. We love living in this state. We haven't lived here long. We've made great friends. People ask us why we came to Tennessee, and I go, the people are wonderful. We meet people every day in, in the grocery store, at the doctor's office. It doesn't matter where you go. We had this wonderful conversation at Chick-fil-A the other night with a lady and thought we were never going to get out of there. But the thing that we love about the state is the people, and we know that the government here is part of that. And we hope that you are listening to us. We live where that we were not listened to. We do not want to see overdevelopment. We've seen the ravages of what it does to communities. It's not pretty. And we want to see the openness, like everybody has said. We want to be able to live on our property and not have cars flying back and forth and up and down our accidents out on 31. We do not want to be in fear of coming in and out of our street, and it's getting that way. And so, thank you very much, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Would someone hand me O2? And we have no one signed up for O2. Might mention to you before we, there's one thing placed here before the Veteran's Service Report is attached to your material. The clerk will read a public notice at this time.
There will be a public hearing at the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting on Monday, July 29th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, related to proposed revisions of the county zoning resolution and official county zoning map. This meeting shall be held at the Sumner County Administration Building in the County Commission Chambers located at 355 North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. At this meeting, the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will discuss and potentially vote on proposed revisions to the Sumner County zoning resolution and official county zoning map as recommended by the Sumner County Regional Planning Commission. These proposed changes include the following. Planning Commission Resolution 2024-01, amending Chapter 3 and 4 of the county zoning resolution to create a new rural preservation zoning district, establishing said district's purpose, bulkyard, and density regulations, amending Chapter 13 of the county zoning resolution to establish requirements for non-conforming platted lots in the RP and RR zones, amending Chapter 14 of the county zoning resolution related to family subdivisions, amending Appendix A and B of the county zoning resolution to make provisions for family subdivisions and for the RP district's allowable uses, making other minor revisions to reflect RP district and amending the county's official zoning map to reflect RP district's boundaries, which encompass areas outside existing urban growth boundaries and within the rural character area shown on the county's comprehensive plan. The Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation related to this item on May 21st, 2024. The public is invited to attend. An opportunity for public comment will be provided. A copy of the proposed revisions is available for review at the Sumner County Planning and Engineering Department during regular business hours and is available on the Planning and Engineering Department's website. A copy of this notice is on file at the Sumner County Planning and Engineering Department in the Sumner County Administration Building located at 355 North Belvedere Drive, Room 202, Gallatin, Tennessee. Anyone having any interest or desire to ask questions concerning this item is invited to attend this meeting or call 615-454-16097. Persons wishing to speak on agenda items shall sign up for the public comment on the sheet provided at the meeting immediately prior to the commencement of the meeting.
We have had a number of people to speak already on 24, one, twenty, 24, twenty, 2024-01. If there's anyone in the audience at this time that would like to speak, and you have not had the chance yet to speak, this is a public hearing. You may let me know, and you can be allowed to speak at this time, anyone. All right, the public hearing is closed, and we will vote on this matter. Do I hear a motion? All right, a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Commissioner Klein.
I, I would think that with the magnitude of what we're proposing here that we would, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to have Mr. Sadith explain exactly what's going on so that all members of the commission understand what we're doing here.
Is there a second to that? All right, all in favor say aye. All right, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry for the delay there. Mr. Chairman, what's proposed here, this is 20, Planning Commission Resolution 2024-01. What the planning, what the county commission is being asked to do is to provide a, an up or down vote essentially this evening on a resolution that received a positive recommendation from the Sumner County Regional Planning Commission a couple of months ago. This, this particular item has a pretty lengthy background. It goes all the way back to January of 2023. So about a year and a half now, the planning commission has been working on this. And they had a number of, of study sessions related to residential lot sizes in the county, beginning again in January 2023. Those study sessions were open to the public. They were held January, February, March, May, June, August, September, December 2023, and February in 2023. And there was a formal public hearing that was held at that time in February of 2024, rather, where a proposal was forwarded on to the county commission. Basically, the, the, I guess the message of that one was a, a pretty strict five-acre minimum lot size across the county or across a lot of the county proposal. That, that was a formal public hearing held on that in, in February of 2024. It went to legislative. Legislative referred it back, I guess that was in March, to explore the possibility, where there's a lot of community feedback, a lot of feedback from the planning commissioners or from the county commissioners. There was a request to add a lot, a good deal more flexibility to what was initially proposed for, for small subdivisions, which we call minor subdivisions, as well as adding some provisions to the code that would allow for family subdivisions. So that was probably the biggest complaint with the initial proposal that came forward several months ago was, you know, people weren't going to be able to divide off an acre for family members and that kind of thing. And so the, the, the proposal was pretty significantly, significantly reworked. Study sessions were held again with the, with the, the planning commission. And revised proposal that I'll discuss here in a minute went to the, the planning commission on May 21st, 2024, and receiving unanimous positive recommendation at that time. The draft zoning text and map that's before the county commission this evening, as per state law, it's exactly the same as what the planning commission heard on, on May 21st. Can't change. So you guys are being asked to, to decide on what was recommended back at the May meeting by the planning commission. In accordance with state statute, this item was advertised in the Gallatin News and Hendersonville Standard on July 4th, 2024. The draft text and map are posted on the Sumner County Planning and Zoning website. A copy of all this stuff is in, in our office here at the county building for public review. And this ad was posted on the Sunshine Board here as well. So that's the public notice requirements that we've, that we've fulfilled as part of this. We've, we've met all the state requirements. So over the course of those study sessions with the planning commission that I, that I mentioned, what they did was they took a really in-depth look, and the planning commissioners in attendance would confirm it was in-depth. We spent a lot of time on it, looking at the county's current residential zoning regulations. Great deal of discussion was conducted on how those residential zoning standards relate to the recommendations of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. So the Comprehensive Plan that guides development here in Sumner County was adopted by the county commission in, in 2010. There was some discussion on non-residential zonings, commercial zonings, industrial zonings. There's a pretty strong consensus at the planning commission level that we need to look at ways to foster job growth and that kind of thing in the county. But for the time being, the planning commission really confined itself to looking at residential zoning with a plan to look at other zonings in the future potentially. And so, and so we, so there was a, a good deal of study on how that residential zoning regime here in the county relates to the county's adopted Comprehensive Plan. And so upon review, it was noted that the county's Comprehensive Plan has a, it really makes a lot of recommendations about residential zoning in the county. And what it essentially says is that the county's approach, longstanding approach, going back about fifty years to residential zoning, was not desirable or sustainable. And so this is just text that I've snipped out of the, came straight out of the Comprehensive Plan, levels some criticisms at the current zoning code. One of the criticisms that it levels is that most parcels in the county can be divided into .92-acre lots. What it says is that, that method of subdivision doesn't take into account topography and encourages sprawl without incentivizing concentrated development. And so our current zoning map is there at right. You see the light green area. Essentially, all the unincorporated area of the county is, is one zoning district. It's RR Rural Residential, which allows forty thousand square foot lots in general, subject to infrastructure requirements, like you have to have public water in order to subdivide lots and those kinds of things. The, the Comprehensive Plan is now about fourteen years old, but as we look through it, it was noted that a lot of what it said then remains, remains the case today. Back fourteen years ago, they were talking about agricultural lands being, the quote from the plan here is, agricultural land is endangered within the county because of the increased cost for small family farms. It's easier and more profitable for an individual to sell land for development instead of continuing to farm. The plan notes that this alters the landscape with the current county zoning adopted in most of the unincorporated portions of the county. The entire county could feasibly be consumed with housing units, or housing on .92-acre lots. And so the point that the comp plan makes is that that's, that's something that, that needed to be, have a hard look to, to see if it was something the county wanted to continue to do. Goes on to say here, this is another portion that's pulled from the plan. The county and its municipalities' current zoning regulations help to generate the current land consumption pattern in the county. And what the Comprehensive Plan says is that continuing these land development policies yields undesirable results expressed by many residents, such as strained infrastructure, loss of farmland, damaged rural view sheds, traffic, and threatened natural resources. A review of the 2035 Plan notes that rural preservation is one of the plan's priorities. One of the methods noted is, is to look at a new zoning district, potentially creating a new zoning district, which is one of the things that came out of this process, was a new RP zoning district. What they elected to do was to configure a district that was less, less restrictive really than what's noted by the 2035 Plan. It talks about five acres a lot in the Comprehensive Plan, and that what, what ended up coming out of it is a hundred thousand square feet or a point, two point three acres for part of the county. And I'll, I'll talk about the specifics over here in just a minute. And this is just some more stuff from viable agricultural objectives and strategies. This is taken from the Comprehensive Plan. There's a recommendation there that's highlighted that it says is the, the county commission should update the county zoning resolution to include an agricultural or rural zoning district with a primary purpose of agricultural uses and not just residential subdivisions. The 2035 Plan has a framework map that, that kind of divides the different parts of the county into different, they call them character areas, suburban, rural, high-growth, other areas. What these character areas are intended to do is to guide future development decisions, such as amendments to the zoning and subdivision standards. So the plan kind of establishes the future, the zoning code, subdivision regulations is how you implement it. And so that's, that's essentially what, what's proposed here is to implement what the Comprehensive Plan is saying should be done. Another, I know I'm reading a lot of this to you guys, but my point is that there's a lot of stuff in here, that a lot of recommendations that are pretty unambiguous in the Comprehensive Plan. What I've got to underline there, concentrating more intense development in existing areas and immediately adjacent to municipalities where infrastructure is present is, is a goal. The general framework map with the community character areas description should be a guide for future land development decisions for the county planning commission and the, and the county commission. Again, Comprehensive Plan establishes a vision, zoning and subdivision regulations implemented. And so this is that framework map. This is what's, this is taken straight out of the county's Comprehensive Plan. Most of the county is divided into two character areas. There's suburban, which roughly corresponds to the municipal urban growth boundaries that were established in the year 2000 by order of the Tennessee State Legislature. That's these yellow areas around the cities. Those are urban growth boundaries, and there's suburban per the, the Comprehensive Plan. Here around Gallatin, around White House, you see this whole, all this, this really light tan yellow area. And then rural, which is the area outside of the urban growth boundaries, which is a significant chunk of the county, but outside of the, the UGBs, the urban growth boundaries. This is just another view, to show you another view of the urban growth boundaries, the amount of space that they take up in the county. These are the current urban growth boundaries here with the city limit shown for reference. Again, as I mentioned, the UGBs have been around for about twenty-four years now. They were adopted by the county commission and all the cities back in the year 2000. And so this is the development pattern, what's recommended by the Comprehensive Plan for the suburban place type, which again, suburban place type corresponds to the urban growth boundaries. You'll see that again here in just a second. It recommends low-density residential development of one dwelling unit per one acre. The rural place type is this green area here again. What it recommends is for the development pattern, very small text, I'll read it, predominantly rural and agricultural uses, very low density of one dwelling unit per five acres. And so, given that the county commission has adopted the Comprehensive Plan by resolution, what statute says is that it has the force of law, essentially. That doesn't mean the county commission is compelled to go and adopt any of its recommendations or anything. What it does say is that the, the planning commission is obliged to, to try to implement it, though. And so TCA 133304, what it says basically is, if the legislative body adopts the general regional plan by resolution, if it's a county, then the decisions made by the legislative body, planning commissioner, BZA, must be consistent with the general regional plan. And so those inconsistencies, that's something ever since I've worked with the county, I've been here for about six years now. The inconsistencies between the Comprehensive Plan and our zoning policies, that's something that everybody, people notice that. You know, the development community notices it, residents notice it, staff notices it. It's hard to explain, other than just to say, we, we, you know, the, the county fourteen years ago thought one way, and we just haven't, we haven't implemented those things. What these changes would do, what they, what they would serve to do is to bring the county's zoning resolution and Comprehensive Plan zoning resolution and comprehensive plan into much closer alignment. From staff perspective, you have the master plan saying one thing, zoning resolution is saying the exact same thing, or at least something very similar. And it should be noted though, as, as, as has been noted, these are, these are probably the most significant updates to the county's zoning standards since zoning was adopted 50 years ago. So the, the comprehensive plan made big recommendations and, and they, they, you know, they're, it's a momentous decision really to, to change the zoning in the way that's proposed, but it is what the plan recommends. So peer review, one thing that I always do, and I, I know I wear the county commissioners and the planning commission out with, what, what do peer jurisdictions do? How do other, other jurisdictions look at zoning, land use, lot sizes, those kinds of things? And they're all over the board. There's nothing, there's no right or wrong answer to any of this stuff. But, but there is one characteristic that everybody seems to, to do, or most places seem to do, is, is there's a bifurcation. The areas around the cities have one zoning. The areas further out in the county have a different zoning, and that's typically related to availability of services. Services are going to be more available closer to the cities, less available, available further out. And so when we look at Wilson County, little hard to read on the screen there, but there's a yellow area around Lebanon and Mount Juliet. If you guys can see this yellow area, that's their rural residential, just like ours, 40,000 square foot lots is what they allow there. The green area outside here is their A1 agricultural zoning, which is 80,000 square foot lots. And so here in Sumner County, what we're talking about now is 40,000 around the cities and 100,000 further out in the county. And so there, there's a, that's similar to what Wilson County is doing. But if you look at other jurisdictions, it's like I said, it's all over the place. Williamson County, when we look at them, the white area is the city limits, but these gray areas here are MGA zoning districts. They're, they're one acre lots around the, around the cities and their urban growth boundaries. The, these green areas here are rural preservation and rural development. Those are five acre, five acre lot sizes is what's required there, five acre densities. Again, though, it's all over the place. There's no right or wrong. It can be whatever, whatever, whatever the, the decision makers in the county want it to be. So when we go to Rutherford County, you see Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne here. The orange is medium density residential, kind of corresponds with the urban growth boundaries pretty close. And the area outside that is their low density residential. And so they go much, much more aggressively, much more aggressive in terms of density, 15,000 square foot lots around the cities and out to an acre further out. The little green areas you see here is a five acre zoning district that they have, that they don't really apply very much. Montgomery County, not to beat a dead horse, but the tan area around the cities represents urban growth boundaries are, are close, 15,000 square foot lots. And this, this green area further out is 1.5 acre lots, so 65,000 square feet. This is Fort Campbell, which is exempt from zoning. So each county canon does evolve its own norms and regulations with lot sizes. You can do whatever you want. As I mentioned, some, Rutherford County is a lot more aggressively pro, pro-growth, I guess you might say. Others are much more focused on rural preservation like Williamson County. Wilson County takes a relatively balanced approach between the one acre and 80,000 square feet, 40,000 and, and, and 80,000, a division that they've done. But there is one thing that they all do, all those, all those are our peers. They differentiate between the areas that are close to the cities versus that way out in the county. There's a differentiation between rural and, and a suburban kind of development. And they tend to allow more density closer to the city limits by dividing everything up into two, two generally distinct zoning districts. So a summary of the changes that's, that are proposed. This is the zoning map again at right. You see it's, it's all this pretty uniform color, 40,000 square foot lots. Again, comp plan recommends that there's a differentiation be made around the cities versus out in the counties, suburban versus rural. And this is the zoning that's proposed. So I'll toggle back and forth just so everybody can kind of see that. You see around those urban growth boundaries that you saw in the comp plan. What they, this would basically, basically bring it pretty close to, in, in alignment with what the comp plan calls for. One thing to note, anybody that has an existing entitlement, if you've got a lot platted, if you've got a PUD that's approved, you have, you have any kind of a property right, you're vested. State law doesn't allow the county to take any of that stuff away. But what this would do is to create a new rural preservation zoning district. So that's that green area here. You saw it on the comp plan, the same shape. It, it would have a minimum lot size of 100,000 square feet or roughly 2.3 acres. And the rural residential zoning would stay just like it is here around the cities. And that would stay 40,000 square feet and that would stay unchanged. Everything else, all the other zoning districts in the county would remain totally unchanged. There'd be no changes made. So this is draft language from the code. Some of this stuff is just sticking the RP zone where it would go here. This is defining what the RP zoning district is. I won't read all that unless somebody wants me to. But, but what it does is it really, it encourages a very low density residential development with an emphasis on maintaining rural atmosphere and surroundings. And that was the language that the planning commission arrived after This adds it to our bulk regulations table, 100,000 square feet, lot width requirements, setback requirements, all those things, pretty comparable to the RR zoning district. This is a lot of text right here. But what this, what this does is it's variable lot size requirements in the new RP zoning district and in the RR zoning district, public water must be available in order to plat lots. And so if you want to reduce down to less than five acres, you have to have public water available. Hydrants have to be available or you, you can't reduce down to less than five acres for major subdivisions that go to the planning commission. There are exceptions to that. Roadway availability requirements, you need to be on a road that's at least 18 feet wide. If you're going to go to the county, or the planning commission and, and do a major subdivision, again, there are some exceptions to that. I'll talk about here in just a second. What it says here is that properties that can't do that, if you're on a 14 foot wide road that doesn't have hydrants, it doesn't have water available, as the developer, you have the option of extending those services or doing five acre lots. Now that said, there's a lot of, a lot of discussion when this first came up about how hard that would be on families and, and individual property owners. And so there's some exceptions that are carved out. Minor subdivisions as defined are exempt. So that's two, one or two lot subdivisions. You'll be able to partition off lots regardless of hydrant availability or roadway availability. You'll be able to do that just like you always have. But in the RP zone, the lots will need to be 100,000 square feet. And then here, this is the first mention that we have of family subdivisions, which is on the next slide. This allows you to, to carve off 40,000 square feet anywhere in the county for a relative, a close family member. And so this is something the planning commission discussed a lot. We borrowed this from, from Williamson County. They have this exact same set of policies or very close to it. It's not exact, but it's very close. I mean, their zoning code. And what this allows you to do is pretty much if you have a lot that can be subdivided in the county and you want to give a, a lot or sell a lot or whatever to a family member, and that's defined, it's a process. You, you have the ability to do, ability to do that and you can do up to seven of them, seven lots, but it depended on how much land you have. Yeah, again, 40,000 square feet regardless of public water availability, road availability, hydrant availability. This is the compromise that the planning commission really worked out a couple of months ago. This just adds the language to our use table. This is what we use to figure out what uses people can do in different zoning districts in the county. And this just adds the RP zone. Uses are allowed or not allowed are basically exactly the same as what you have now in the RR zone. This is just the second page of that table. There was some concern from some of the surveyors that making these changes would leave a lot of non-conforming lots out there. This will allow those surveyors to resubdivide lots, to move lot lines between neighbors, as long as you're not going down to less than the lot size that was in place when it was originally created. And so this doesn't like grandfather again where you're frozen in time and you can't move a lot line. Then this is just moving, moving, sir, just adding some, some language, some bureaucratic stuff to add it in, add the RP stuff in where it needs to go. Same thing here. There's a lot of text up there on the screen. This is taken from our zoning code. Whenever the planning commission and the county commission amend the zoning map or the zoning text, there are nine standards. Those primarily revolve around the comprehensive plan. This is taken from our zoning code. And the questions that it asks is like number one, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Yes. Are there changed conditions that require an amendment? The intent is to bring the zoning regulations in closer conformity with the comp plan and so on. We can go through all those if the planning commission wants to. Those are map standards and these are the text amendment standards, which are very similar. Again, we can go through all these as well. These are all provided in the packet that was sent out. So next steps, as I mentioned, the planning commission forwarded a positive recommendation on May 21st. State law requires that the county commission is tasked with approving or denying this. If you guys need additional information, you can defer it or refer it back to the planning commission and it will need to be re-noticed. If approved, the changes would take effect immediately per the, the terms of the, the resolution. End of my presentation, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Suddeth. That was a good presentation. I understand and fully support this change, but I had some questions from constituents that wanted to know, and they're not exactly my constituents, but they're related to me, so I count them as mine, wanted to know if, where the lines are that would affect them. And I know roughly where they are just by looking at the map, but if you wanted to go in and look at like street names or things like that for other people in the county to see what's, what it's going to affect them, is there a place they can go on county website or something they can refer to, to look up their address to see how it's going to affect them? Can you maybe speak to that now for public information?
Yes, sir. So it's, it's a little bit roundabout, but on the... The, on the, the assessor's website, there's a GIS link that we use for pretty much everything in my office. On that, you can, you can bring up the urban growth boundaries. And if your property is within one of the urban growth boundaries, you know. If it's outside of the urban growth boundaries, then, then it's not. That's how we tell around the office, other than pulling up the zoning, the zoning map that I had there. But that allows us to, to pull the street. If somebody has a question about that, they're certainly free to call us and we'll be glad to look into it and see if they're, if they're going to be in the RR zone or the RP zone depending on where they live.
So it's easy for you to direct them on that question.
Right, right. Yeah. You have to know how to use a GIS system and that. It's pretty simple. It's just clicking a box and that kind of thing. But, but most people probably might not be familiar with it. But that, we're, we're glad to help if people have questions.
Commissioner Palmeroy.
Good presentation. Thank you. A couple of quick, how many current in the RR zone building permits are there on one acre lots?
This year so far?
Mm-hmm.
So far this calendar year, it's about 200, about 200.
200 in the RR.
200 single family building permits this, this calendar year on average.
Are on acre lots or on less than 2.3 acres?
Well, I don't, I don't have it differentiated down there. Probably...
I mean, that'd probably be a good number since this whole thing is predicated on, on that, right? Like, I mean, I drive around the county a lot. And when we look at that map, right, we see a lot of, I think there's a lot of confusion sometimes on what happens in the city and what happens in the county.
In the, in the unincorporated part of the county.
And in the urban growth area, right? Like those are some pretty significant things. So when you get out into that big map you showed with all that green area, which is our rural space, I would be curious, I, I would bet it's less than five. Houses are being built in the RR that are being sold on less than 2.3 acre lots.
It'd be, it'd be quite a bit more than that.
What do you think it is?
Well, in the...
Outside of the urban growth area. I'm talking the rural rural.
Outside of there, it depends on what you're, in a, in a given calendar year, I would say probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple hundred across, across the, the...
Just the rural rural.
Yeah, yeah. Somewhat, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a, a hundred or so in the, in the suburban area. That's just a rough kind of a guess.
In the suburban, I'm talking about in the RR.
Probably, probably a couple hundred per year back to 2021.
Couple hundred per year. So 200 acres a year is being eaten up in one acre lots.
I'd say that's probably a pretty reasonable guess.
In our rural. How many acres do we have in the county?
The unincorporated area is about 420 square miles. And so, so that's a lot of acres. I don't know that number off the top of my head.
It's very, how many high density subdivisions are currently being built in the RR that are less than acre lots?
Well, you'd have to define high density, less than acre lots, probably right now, probably that are under construction right now, probably about four or five, I would say, probably across the, the unincorporated part of the county. Now, within the cities, you got a whole lot more.
Within the cities. And within the urban growth, I think you have some, but I'm talking about in the RR.
Within the, oh, the, that are less than acre.
Out in the RR, out in the rural rural areas.
Very few, very, very, very few. Yeah. Sewer's not available.
I'm just saying, I took some calls this week from some people who own under, 100 acre tracts of land.
Right.
Who are really disappointed with people who own five to seven acre tracts of land. Well, that's, that's surprising. I mean, we all want to talk about what we have and what we don't have. And we have boundaries and, and growth areas. And we say, well, I live on five acres. So this guy shouldn't live on 2.1. Well, there's people out there, took a call last week from a lady who lives on 100 acres and her exact thing was somebody was shooting fireworks off and they only owned four point, a little over four acres. And so she had more of a right to tell them they shouldn't shoot fireworks off in the county because she owned 100 plus acres and they own 4.1. I mean, that's a, a real phone call. Will you please, you know, the sheriff didn't respond. And they shouldn't even be out here. They don't even own a real farm. And I just listened. So just, I didn't know we had this in the rural rural. I get it that we have our city limits and we have our urban. But when we get out in the rural rural, I don't know if we just have a abundant of, I don't think we do. And this from a guy who's against this, who owns, I don't want, I want the counties to be protected. But at the same time, when we talk about being conservative, property, landowner property rights, I think is a fundamental issue of conservatism. And I just don't know, legalism's a scary thing, right? I don't know where we dropped that at. Is it 2.5? Is it 5.5? I just think it gets scary when you start letting a few people vote on what people can do with the land they bought and paid for. And nobody's out here standing up for the people who own hundreds of acres to the people who want to come in and just buy a piddly five right down the road from them. But we don't like that guy who wants to buy two. We want him to have 2.3. Just something to think about.
Okay. Without objection, I'm going to let Mr. Suddeth take a seat. He has explained the changes. Commissioner, when?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I had a, a couple of questions for Mr. Suddeth. If, if it's okay to ask those questions too, Mr. Suddeth?
Well, yes, Mr. Suddeth, come forward. Anyone in the queue now have specific questions for Mr. Suddeth? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Suddeth.
Yeah. So first, I, I do want to say, first I do want to say that I, I do appreciate the work of our planning commission. I, I really appreciate the effort and the diligence and the time that's put in to actually read the comprehensive plan. I, I think that's been missing for some time. It, it's a, it's a lengthy document, 378 pages, I believe. It's a lot of, a lot of environmental stuff in there, but it, it's a quite extensive document. So I, I have a question. Mr. Suddeth, on the creation of that plan, that 2035 plan, what role did the GNRC play in the creation of that plan?
See, I really don't know. That was before my time here. I'm sure that they had a seat at the table basically, but the, the plan itself was done in-house by, there was a staff planner at the time that was here. I think there were very meager, meager resources that were allocated to this project. And so I don't think that they had a, a real significant role. I think they helped, as you mentioned, there's some forestry components and that kind of thing to the plan. There was some kind of a grant that was received related to forestry and rural preservation stuff that GNRC assisted the, the county with obtaining back then. But I don't know that they had an active role necessarily in the formulation of the plan.
Okay. Okay. And I was just a little concerned because I know we've heard in this body before when referencing the 2035 plan, the GNRC and how, how bad they are and the Nashville's North Shore and the plan is just to, to urbanize Sumner County as to a part of Nashville. And, and we've just seen parts of the plan that were brought forward that actually showed the complete opposite of that. There's actually recommendations to slow growth. There, there's a lot of good recommendations in there. So again, I will applaud the, the, the planning commission on their diligence and for the work that was done. And I, I think that what was put forward is in line with the 2035 comprehensive plan. So it does align to the vision of the plan. You know, as I was reviewing the changes, I, I did call Mr. Suddath and, and, and asked him some questions regarding the, the changes. And one specifically that, that I want to make sure is, is made clear was on the fire hydrants. And so I, I asked Mr. Suddath about the fire hydrants, the provision on that. And so with that fire hydrant provision in there, can you explain a bit more about that? Because I think we had a little bit more of an in-depth conversation and there was a little bit more detail given in our phone conversation.
Sure. I know one of the questions you had was, do we have a map of hydrants and where hydrants are available? And the utilities are prohibited from publishing those. There's, Department of Homeland Security has a lot of infrastructure requirements. And so they can't publish maps of their lines and plants and those kinds of things. But what, I don't remember, I don't know exactly what information you're, you're wanting, but, you know, with regard to fire hydrants, the county's planning commission now in the subdivision regulations has a, there's a requirement for major subdivisions that are going to go to the planning commission. They're required to be within, all lots are required to be within 500 feet of a hydrant. That's a requirement. You can't plant the lots now if you can't do that. And so this is something that, that in the zoning code aligns with the subdivision regulations. So that's something you hear me talk about a lot is trying to get all the different regulations in alignment because there's lots of different ones and it's helpful for everybody if everything kind of says the same thing. You don't have contradictory language. And so the, the hydrant requirements that are in this are a reflection of what's already in the planning commission's subdivision regulations.
Okay, so this isn't something that's going to be brand new and should be a surprise to anybody, right?
Six months to a year now, I guess, the, the requirements related to hydrants. And so I think the, the development community is aware of it. One thing that, you know, I can't, I can't procure or produce a map showing where the hydrants are, but one of the things that the plan recommends is more density closer to the cities. That generally corresponds to where you have more water availability and you have more pressure availability for hydrants and those kinds of things. And so further out in the county, very rarely can you install a hydrant, you know, in the very rural parts of the county. The water lines are too small, they don't have adequate pressure, those kinds of things.
Gotcha.
Or the day after I started, it was something they had grappled with at the meeting the night before. Big argument about hydrants and that kind of thing in the county. So it's, it goes back to the eighties, this discussion about fire hydrants in the county.
Okay. Yeah, and I think the other piece that we talked about, just in relation to that, the fire hydrants was, and the provisions or the exceptions that were in, already included in as far as like the, the minor, the minor developments, three or less, is that?
Two, it's less than three.
Less than three, yeah.
Now, surveyors submit these minor plots to us and they're exempt from the hydrant requirements. You cross the three lot threshold, want to do things that are more than that, there are additional requirements that come into play that they have to take into account now.
Gotcha. And a lot of those are not going to be new as, as opposed, or introduced in this language. They're already really existing, we're just kind of consolidating and cleaning up. Okay, okay. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman. So again, I, I think this is a good thing. It stays consistent with our 2035 plan. I know that there's been decisions made that, that keep us in alignment with that and, and other planning decisions where we've turned people down because it didn't align to the 2035 plan and that's the reason. So, you know, this may shock some people, but I, I'll support this because it is in alignment with the 2035 plan. It's a vision that was well researched, there is data to back up the reasoning why these, these suggestions and this vision's laid out. So I'm, I'm going to support it. Thank you, Chairman.
Right. We only have four people in the queue. Is there anyone that would like to ask a question of the planning director? Okay, oh, Mr. Harrison, all right, you're next in the queue, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Josh, in the Mitchellville area, which is of course obviously in my district, there's part of this that is in the, this proposed area, and then there's also part of it that is in a different zoning capacity. So my question is this. If this is ever annexed into the city of Portland, are these proposed zoning, is that going to be grandfathered in where? Or does it go back under the city of Portland's? Explain how that works.
So if this, if this passed and it's not up on the screen, but I'm, I'm looking at it on my, on mine, the, the area around Portland, that they have a extensive urban growth boundary. It's, it's quite large. The zoning there will remain rural residential. 40,000 square foot lots is what will, what will be allowed by right in that area. When they get annexed into the city, one of the things that the city is going to do when they annex it is they're going to, they're going to rezone it as part of that process.
Under their own planning condition, yes.
That's right, to their, their own zonings, it'll have a recommendation from their planning commission and the city council. It's exceedingly unlikely that you're going to have a developed subdivision in the county that's going to get annexed because they have to get property owner consent, there'd have to be a referendum. In general, that's, the only annexations you're going to have to go into the city of Portland are going to be ones that, 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 but the city limits that are looking to hook on to city sewer. Those are going to be the ones that would, that would be able to annex in.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, next question is, you know, the, obviously county commissions change over every cycle. If the next county commission or a future county commission wanted to roll this back to something else, what's your plan?
Just what we're, that's right, what we're doing right now. Yeah, just, that's right, it would go back to the planning commission, just like what we've done. There would be, you know, if, if the next commission elects to keep me around and not eliminate my position, I'll go through a bunch of study sessions with them and, and we'll go through a protracted process that they will, they will grow to hate. And then we'll, we'll, we'll go, we'll get a recommendation from them and then we'll go to the county commission. Yes, sir, they can roll it back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Teichner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to just keep it very short and sweet, but I had several emails kind of right around the time that this was on the agenda back with the planning commission. I have some folks who were concerned, so I looked up addresses and, and, you know, a number of those were from Macon County and a number of them were from Davidson County, a number of them were living in apartments. So I, I thought, okay, well, just in case, I'm going to just check, find out, talk to my citizens. I had a couple of folks who were a little worried about it at first and then I researched it. I feel like everyone's at ease with it on there and I, I wanted to say, if there's any questions from citizens, there were some great answers to questions and Josh has done a tremendous job too. But back on the legislative committee side, and, and I even went so far as to give out my, my, my number there because I have a, a good deal of that chunk right there in the middle of the county that, it's, I don't have it, but the citizens that I represent have it right there in the middle of the county. And I just want to make sure that if anyone had any issues, post that meeting to contact me. And I just should be said that I didn't have one phone call, not one text against it. So, so that, that really felt like it cleared it up, just wanted to share that with everyone. And I, I appreciate all the work that's been done by the planning commission to try to really come in line with whatever it is that, that has even been decided in that. So thank you for all the hard work, guys.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, echoing, just thank you, Josh, thank you for the planning commission's work. I am not in favor of 2024-01, 2024-02. And I want to come at it from, from this angle, you know. Been here all my life, raised in Sumner County, born in California because my dad was in Vietnam and that's, that's where life took us for a couple of years. But, you know, I think about the people not too far outside the city limits and the urban growth boundary, just in that, that, you know, maybe grandfather owned the land for 100 years, worked, worked the farm. Now the grandkids have the land, they want to subdivide it, make some money. You know, I get that. I, I do think what we, what we're voting on tonight is, is too restrictive. I would like to see those boundaries of the, the preservation rule boundaries out a little further. It's a huge county, very large, and some of those areas of the county don't need 100,000 square feet homes, you know, 2.33 acres. But there's a lot of our county in between Gallup and Bethpage, in between, you know, Portland, Westmoreland areas that, that do, and the infrastructure's coming. And I, I hate it for them, I hate it for the fact that, you know, now, we're already making it really hard for people to buy in Sumner County. You know, those one acre lots are few and far between, much less that, you know, somebody trying to pay student income, you know, student loan debt and debt income ratio to be able to buy a house. You know, we're, we're pushing our own children from being able to be homeowners. But, but my, my concern is more, I think, of, of just where those boundaries lie. And, and, and I, I do think, I, I did come to the planning commission when Etzel Charles spoke, he's a leading economist in, in the area, United States. But, you know, he, he, he brought some good points and I do think that this could very well come back to bite us in five, 10 years down the road. And I think you, you alluded to that, that we, that a future commission could change this, is that right?
You know, there's no future commission that's really bound by any zoning decisions or choices of previous commissions.
It's too restrictive for me, but thank you.
Commissioner Cho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Suddath, thank you for standing up here and suffering slings and arrows. I want to help you out on a couple of questions that were asked earlier. But first, forgive me, about a year ago, I watched a news article by the Associated Press and in it, there was a comment made that certain people on the commission, and I think I might have been alluded to as one of them, don't believe in government. Well, that's very interesting to hear because now, you know, we're trying to do good government and we've got some arguments over here that are basically saying, hey, you own a piece of property, you can do what you want with it. Well, I am currently thinking about it. I mean, we've got a lot of problems in, in Hendersonville with waste management right now, I'm down in Hendersonville. I would love to partner with my fellow commissioner to, to put a waste management site right there by his property. I think that'd be a great idea. But to go ahead and continue on some facts, 2011, 2022, this was published by Tennessee Institute of Agriculture, 2011 to 2022, 16,000 acres of farmland in rural, rural area gone, made into, made into residential. That is three times the average of Tennessee. So Sumner County is losing three times the average of Tennessee. We just had a great presentation here showing that, that there's a reason for that. And the reason for that is that we don't look anything, we have not built our zoning anything like our peers. We just have cities and then the county can, you can dump a residential unit wherever you want. That's the way it looks right now. This is a much more comprehensive and thorough way to look at it. It's very logical, very rational, and once again, looks like a lot of our peers. It's not like we're reinventing the wheel here, we're doing something that successful counties across middle Tennessee have done. So I want to address a couple of other things real quick. We are currently in a budget cycle and we're looking at really trying to beef up our highway department, recognizing that our, our highway infrastructure is behind. Why is it behind? It's behind because we have lots and lots and lots of development, three times that of the average out in what used to be farmland. Our infrastructure has not cut up yet. We're going to try to help it catch up, but it's not caught up. There was one other item, and I saw a lot of this in the, in the emails. I got a lot of emails over this and, and similar to my other commissioner there, you, you look at where they came from, most of them were, I, I don't, there might have been one or two that were actually in my, my district and very few, a lot of them outside of the county entirely. And so the argument in some of these emails, and we heard a little bit of an argument earlier, is that we want to increase supply of homes for middle income folks. And that is a argument I am sympathetic to. But what I would tell you is if you look at the type of homes that are typical of going into these developments, they're 4,000 acre, or excuse me, 4,000 square foot, 3,500, 4,000 square foot homes, these are not your starter homes. If you want to improve affordable housing, it's going to be a hard conversation. But that hard conversation, and to Mr. Suddath, to your point, that hard conversation is about getting more, more development where their existing infrastructure can support it. And so that means in the cities themselves. Now, that's going to be a hard conversation, right? That's going to be a hard conversation because, you know, a lot of the cities, understandably, don't necessarily want more, more density in, in their location. But that's at least an honest argument. Hey, we're increasing this, we're increasing higher density in order to improve the, the affordability of homes. That doesn't apply here. The homes that we're talking about that typically go out there are not your starter homes. So anyway, in conclusion, apologies for my diatribes here, but I'm going to be in support of this. Thank you for your guys' work and, and I really just appreciate it and I'm, I just think it's great.
Thank you. Now, we're moving in now to people who are speaking for the second time. So please make it very meaningful, and it's not that I don't want to hear you, but no one wants to hear you. Okay, so, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll keep it short. I just want to speak against the narrative that our children will not be able to afford homes in Sumner County. I've got four children, all in their twenties or early thirties, all of them live in Sumner County. Two of them are first responders that have side hustles, work, work second jobs on their day off. And one of them has, lives with their fiancee and they, they own a home too. So three of them are homeowners and one of them lives in one of the most expensive apartment complexes in the county. So they're all doing it. That narrative, I believe, is a false narrative. It's, it may depend on how hard the children want to work for these homes, but they are still affordable homes in Sumner County.
Commissioner Teichner.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you've already, but I just had one more thing that might clarify. And it, it may go without saying, I think that everybody's heart's in the right place, even the ones for it or against it. I really do believe that with this commission. And I love that everyone's thinking about it, but I just want to remind everybody that, that, okay, I live on 1.3 acres and Josh is not going to come in and bulldoze my home because I'm not on five. So I, I mean, the homes that are currently there are not, you know, they're already going to be there. It's not going to go away unless somebody tears them down. So there's already homes on some smaller acreage. Just, just to clarify, I know that seems kind of a silly thing to say, but, but it is, when we get to thinking about it, sometimes we get so worried about, you know, what is there and what's not there. It doesn't change anything about the ones that are currently standing. And then just to, just to finish it off, one of my best friends killed a gigantic buck years ago on some land, big Pope and Young buck, and it was like a record. Well, now Cool Springs Galleria sits there. And so I think that's the thing that my citizens that I represent are the most worried about, is, is that land going away? Because once it goes away, that you can't go back down to Costco and buy another one. So I just, I just want to make sure that we know that that's the scariest part for a lot of the folks out here because nobody wants it to not be affordable. But that's the economy situation, that's not something that we're making happen. But the thing is, is I, I love that, that it's just, that it's just preserving what is for future generations because otherwise we won't have anything left.
Commissioner Klein.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I just kind of want to wrap up a couple of the confusions that may exist. The urban growth boundaries around every municipality, those are established in unanimous vote between the municipalities and the counties. So any area that's in a municipality, urban, urban growth boundary, like Mr. Suddath said, those will. municipality urban growth boundary, like Mr. Sodis said, those will remain 40,000 square foot lots. Those are fairly big areas, especially when it comes to Gallatin and Portland. When, when, if and when those are annexed by the municipalities, that's as far as the municipalities can grow unless there's another meeting where the municipalities all vote unanimously with the county commission. So that's a very difficult thing to happen. But what we've tried to do on the Planning Commission, we've worked really, really hard on this to address all concerns that all people have. We we have tried to create an area with a county that has great flexibility. You can't put the entire world in Sumner County. We already have doubled our size in about 25 years. And at the rate it's going, it will it will continue that way. So this was a way to maintain farmland and open areas. The municipalities will have their densities, and as they annex their urban growth boundaries, they will be able to do whatever density they see fit. This is just a way to give us variation in densities across the county. This will also help with flood control, because the more roofs and flat work that you have, roads, the more runoff you're going to have. And we we all know that we have severe flood control issues right now. The other thing that this will help us with is currently, the county, at just over 200,000 citizens, sends about 50,000 citizens outside the county every day to go to work. So a quarter of our population travels outside the county. What what one of the things that the county committee, Planning Commission, is hoping to do is encourage industry or commercial or industrial developments within the county so that we can keep our people in the county. This would be done through creating jobs. And so we see this, the work that we've done on this, is going to lead to a new 2035-type plan that the the planning and engineering department has already started working on. This will enable us to sculpt the county better so that we became we become an economic force on our own. So I would encourage all of the commissioners to think about what we're trying to do here. And you know what? If it doesn't work, then we can do something else. But what we don't, what we do know is what we're doing isn't working. It's the and as as the Commissioner for District Six, I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt that the vast majority of people I have spoken to and continue to speak to in District Six are in favor of this, and I know from talking to other commissioners that their constituency is as well. So I would strongly encourage a vote, a positive vote on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Genon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say that I really appreciate what the commission, the Planning Commission did. As a person who lives within the city of of Gallatin, and the overdevelopment of the city of Gallatin, the lack of, many of you are hearing the constituents, you're hearing them, you're hearing what they're having to say. And for several years, we have not had anyone, not very few of the city, listened to the constituents. We didn't, we didn't want all the development, because our roads can't handle it, our traffic, our safety issues. We have, as you say, flooding issues. And I applaud you for taking this on, because in the future, and we talked about, you've talked about unaffordable housing. Well, in the discussions of these subdivisions that they're going in in Gallatin, especially, I can give you case in point, across the street from my home, the developer is building 695, I think it's about 695 homes, and they're on small lots. And those prices are going to be extremely high. And the argument was, well, these are not starter homes. These are secondary or other homes. So the argument that people can't afford them, it's because it's driven by the market of the people that are selling them. So I applaud you. I applaud all of you for listening to the constituents and being someone who lives within the city limits and knowing what's happening to the overdevelopment, the apartments, the condos, all these things that are happening. It's a breath of fresh air to know that there is going to be an area in the county where you will still have that beautiful farmland, the rural atmosphere. The character will be that of what Sumner County has always been traditionally, and not just a large suburban area for outside of Nashville. And I just want to say that I appreciate everyone in here, and I respect everyone's decision. But I can tell you from my my experience, what I live through every day, that what you're doing is going to make a big difference in the comfort and the safety of your constituents. And I am absolutely 100% for this. Thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, Commissioner Klein had mentioned something, and it was on the urban growth boundaries that I found pretty interesting, is is that, and I'm sure it was in the research that you guys did as a as a planning commission, about how the cities are restricted to those urban growth boundaries, and they really, they can't go past that without a unanimous decision within the cities and the county. So I know we hear a lot about how, you know, the cities are just all going to grow together, and that is a concern. But it was interesting to hear from Commissioner Klein that that's really not possible. Not saying that we shouldn't do this, but the the narrative, we talked about false narratives earlier about unaffordable housing, but just the the narrative of how the cities will all grow together and consume all of the available land throughout the county, is really not an accurate depiction of of what is reality. So I appreciate Mr. Klein pointing that out and 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 doing the research in in the Planning Commission. Again, I think you guys have done a good job in developing a fair plan that is consistent with the vision for the county. So that's all I got. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Call question.
All right. Question's been called. All in favor? Oppose? All right, place it on the board, please.
Each commissioner, record your vote. Anyone wanting to change their vote?
All right. We'll take a little break after the second notice, public notice, the Planning Commission, that it should be unnecessary to do a great deal of debate on this, I think. So please read the notice, Madam Clerk. Read the notice. All right, we'll take a break since everybody thought that's what I was calling for, so.[1126.13]
Lord have mercy, surely they knew we were voting on the resolution. I mean, we talked about it. I'll ask the clerk, I will ask the clerk to read the public notice please for twenty four, twenty twenty four oh two.
There will be a public hearing at the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting on Monday, July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, at seven o'clock P. M. Related to proposed revisions of the county zoning resolution, this meeting shall be held at the Sumner County Administration Building in the County Commission Chambers, located at three fifty five North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. At this meeting, the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will discuss and potentially vote on proposed revisions to the Sumner County zoning resolutions as recommended by the Sumner County Regional Planning Commission. These proposed changes include the following, Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty four oh two, amending chapter two and appendix B of the county zoning resolution related to wind turbine and solar panel farms, data processing facilities, battery and energy storage products, amending chapter nine of the county zoning resolution related to adequate public facilities for planned unit developments, amending chapter eleven of the county zoning resolution related to retaining walls, plot requirements, and necessary dwelling units, amending chapter fourteen of the county zoning resolution related to common review procedures in zoning compliance forms and making amendments throughout, clarifying recent departmental name changes. Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation related to this item on May twenty first, twenty twenty four. The public is invited to attend, an opportunity for public comment will be provided, a copy of the proposed revisions is available for review at the Sumner County Planning and Engineering Department during regular business hours and is available on the Planning and Engineering Department's website. A copy of this notice is on file at the Sumner County Planning and Engineering Department in the Sumner County Administration Building located at three fifty five North Belvedere Drive, room two oh two, Gallatin, Tennessee. Anyone having any interest or desire to ask questions concerning this item is invited to attend this meeting or call six one five four five one six zero nine seven. Persons wishing to speak on agenda items shall sign up for public comment on the sheet provided at the meeting immediately prior to the commencement of the meeting.
All right, motion and a second, but we, we need to ask if we've missed anyone that would like to speak to this. I declare the public meeting closed, and we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Pose light sign. Okay. On the, um, commission, pardon, Commissioner Teichner.
Mr. Chairman, I was just asked to, just to publicly say this, uh, on the call to question, I voted no, and I, and she can't put, uh, she can't put down something if, if it's not said publicly, so I voted no on call to question, so did Commissioner Becker. If anybody else did, I just want to make sure that was, for the record, I didn't want anything shady going on, so everybody would know that we voted no on call to question, and I, I believe yes on the, uh, or at least I voted yes on the, on the actual resolution. It was just a confusion, and I just want to make sure that it was all public knowledge. Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Thank you. Uh, we have, uh, on number seven, the commission for August the twenty sixth, and there's been a publication. Uh, the attorney wanted me to let you know on the special call meeting on the twelfth, I think it is. So that has been published. Uh, is there a motion? Second. All in favor say aye. Pose light sign. Why are we doing what?
Why are we moving the meeting?
Uh, budgetary, uh, concerns.
Yeah, that, yeah, since there's a special call on the twelfth, why, why do we need to move this? I thought this was moved to the twenty sixth.
No, that was never the intent.
Well, that was, that's not what other commissioners explained. So, so I guess why, why do we need to move this?
Uh, Budget Committee Chairman, uh, why is the need he's asking for the twenty sixth?
So there were a couple.
Pardon me, yeah, twenty six.
There were a couple reasons, uh, and, uh, the commissioner is partly correct on it, so when we first, uh, when we were first putting forward the, the kind of path to get budget through, we wanted to give maximum time uh, for the, the schools to be able to react to the, the last time we sent back their budget. Since then, um, since the, uh, schools have since put forward a, uh, an altered budget, uh, we've, we're calling a special call meeting. Um, and you are, I'm calling special call budget meeting, you've called a special called, uh, full commission meeting on the twelfth, so that part is correct. However, uh, in addition, uh, our finance director was not going to be able to be available on the typical third Monday, so it would be helpful to move it to the twenty sixth. Both of those were in play. It's not the end of the world if you don't vote on it. I, I think it'd probably be helpful to move it, so.
Okay.
That's the, that's the explanation.
Well, we voted at this point.
Well, at, but point of order, how, how can we vote on it with, before people have the ability to ask questions?
We just did it.
I know, but why, why do we, why do we choose to do that?
There is no why. I mean, I, I just did it.
So just, just for giggles?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, August, uh, the communication from, uh, Committee on Committees, I'd like to say that the Committee on Committees uh, wanted me to inform you, uh, and I'm happy to do that, uh, today, that uh, they are willing to serve, um, another, uh, term as, uh, that slate. So, uh, at this time, we will have, uh, election of committee on committees. Now, this is the way that we're going to do it. We've always done it. I don't care how many people you nominate, this committee will have to be nominated, this slate. There may be another slate, or you may want to nominate two people, one, but one person or whatever. But if the slate exceeds five people, what we normally do is call the roll, the clerk will call the roll, and you will nominate, or you will vote for five people for the committee on committees. Okay, everybody understand? And, uh, so the top five people will then become your slate. That's the way it's always been done. So, we have a slate, but that, they will be vote, everybody will be voted on individually if there's more than one slate uh, nominated. Commissioner Mansfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, announcement, I guess, wanted to say that, uh, the county clerk has sent out, um, committee preference sheet to be due back to her office by this Friday, August the second. Um, since we've, this meeting was so late in the month, normally we'd have a little bit more time. Um, and as far as slates, uh, I would like to nominate for next year's slate as Commissioner Mary Janong, Commissioner Deborah Holmes, Commissioner Merrill Hyde, Commissioner Chrissy Miller, and Commissioner Jamie Teichner. Nice move.
All right, uh, nominations don't require a second, but, uh, they, the nominations have been made. Uh, did our clerk get all those names? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Becker?
So, I didn't want to make sure I understand, do I, do I have, if I want to nominate somebody, I have to nominate a full slate or just a person?
You, you can nominate an individual, two people, three, whatever.
Okay. Um, before we do that, is it safe to assume that the five he listed are all wanting to do it?
Pardon?
Is it safe to assume the five he just mentioned, he, he just listed are willing to do it?
Those are the ones that said they were willing to.
Okay, okay. I would like to.
Except for me, I didn't say that. I am willing to serve, but I could care less if I don't.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Okay. Well, good. So, I haven't spoken with these people, so they may or may not be interested. So, but I would like to nominate, um, Ms. Bergdorf, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Schoeff, and Mr. Becker.
All right, did the clerk get all those names?
Hmm, it was me.
All right, uh, Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate a slate.
All right.
Mr. Hyde, or excuse me, Commissioner Hyde, Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Lambeth, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Holmes.
Okay, if there are any duplicates on that, the clerk will take care of that. I'll give you a chance to, do you have those, uh?
Uh, yes, uh.
All right.
Somebody asked me to repeat that, Mr. Chair, is that okay?
Pardon?
Someone asked for me to repeat that.
Please do, yes.
Mr. Hyde, or excuse me, Commissioner Hyde, Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Lambeth, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Holmes.
All right. Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to note that, uh, it's, uh, my preference, uh, to whoever the committee on committees is, it's my preference to stay on budget. Uh, and just kind of given the, that role, uh, I think it would be difficult for me to, to serve well in the committee on committees, so I would like to, uh, remove my name, um, and add, uh, Commissioner Pomeroy as a, uh, as a nomination, just one name.
Uh, all right, uh, clerk, did you get that one, that name? Now, uh, we might want to, we might want to call those names out one more time. Madam Clerk, can you read those out for us? You want me to read?
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Commissioner Janong, Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Hyde, Commissioner Teichner, Commissioner Bergdorf, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Schoeff withdrew, and nominated pump, Commissioner Pomeroy, Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Lambeth, and I believe that is all without the double nominations.
Uh, speak up now or forever hold your peace, uh, if, if we're incorrect on that. So, we will call out now, uh, your name, and you will give us five. We will hopefully have five elected. If we don't, we'll go a second round on the ballot, but uh, the, you, if anybody gets thirteen or above, they will be elected. All right, uh, Madam Clerk? You, you'll just give us five names and she'll check them off. Yes.
I'm going to call these out. I want to be sure I didn't miss any of the ones. Janong, Miller, Teichner, Holmes, Hyde, Bergdorf, Rogers, Becker, Pomeroy, Lambert. Did I leave anyone out?
Yeah.
Yes. So, I got it. All right, what I'm going to do is I'm, if you're supposed to vote for five, I'm going to call out each commissioner's name. You will give me the five you want to vote for. Okay, Commissioner Moss.
Holmes, Miller, Becker, Pomeroy, Lambert.
Miller, Holmes, Pomeroy.
Becker.
Okay, one more. Lambert. Okay, Commissioner Wright.
Hyde, Miller, Rogers, Becker, and Lambert.
All right, I've got Miller, Hyde, Rogers, Becker, and Lambert.
Correct.
Commissioner Harrison.
Hyde, Rogers, Pomeroy, Lambert, Becker.
Okay, I've got Hyde, Rogers, Becker, Pomeroy, and Lambert. Is that correct?
Correct.
Lambert.
Hyde, Rogers, Bergdorf, Pomeroy, Lambert.
Hyde, Bergdorf, Rogers, Lambert. Need one more. Pomeroy. Commissioner Rogers.
It goes almost the same order, Hyde, Pomeroy, Lambert, uh, myself, and Holmes.
I've got Holmes, Hyde, Rogers, Pomeroy, and Lambert.
Correct.
Commissioner Klein.
Janong, Holmes, Hyde, Miller, Teichner.
Janong, Miller, Teichner, Holmes, and Hyde.
Miss Miller.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Uh, Hyde, Becker, Lambert, Rogers, Pomeroy.
Okay, I've got Hyde.
She called Pomeroy.
Pomeroy. Repeat those again, Commissioner Sullivan, please.
Becker, Lambert, and Rogers.
You're just voting for three?
I voted for two more. I, I'll read those again. Hyde, Becker, Lambert, Rogers, Pomeroy.
Just got one too many included now.
Okay. Commissioner Klein, repeat yours, please.
Repeat, repeat. Oh, repeat, I'm sorry. Uh, Janong, Holmes, Hyde, Miller, Teichner.
Right, and Commissioner Sullivan, I've got yours as Hyde, Rogers, Becker, Pomeroy, and Lambert.
Correct.
Okay, Commissioner Ring.
Hyde, Rogers, Becker, Pomeroy, and Lambert.
All right, I've got Hyde, Rogers, Becker, Pomeroy, and Lambert. Is that correct?
Yes.
Janong.
Yes, ma'am. Um, myself, Deborah Holmes, Rhone, Chrissy Miller, and Jamie Teichner.
All right, I've got yourself, Miller, Holmes, Hyde, and Teichner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, Ring, I've got Commissioner Ring, repeat yours again, please.
Uh, Hyde, Rogers, Becker, Pomeroy, Lambert.
Okay. Commissioner Harris.
Hyde, Pomeroy, Lambert, Rogers, Bergdorf.
Okay, I've got Hyde, Bergdorf, Pomeroy, Lambert.
Rogers.
Rogers, thank you. Commissioner Pomeroy.
Holmes, Hyde, Lambert, Becker, and myself.
Okay, I've got Holmes, Hyde, Becker, Pomeroy, and Lambert. Is that correct? Commissioner Holmes.
Um, Janong, Holmes, Miller, um, Hyde, and Teichner.
I've got Janong, Miller, Hyde, Teichner. Who have I missed?
Holmes.
Okay. Commissioner Boyd.
Oh, Janong, Holmes, Hyde, Miller, and Teichner.
I've got Janong, Miller, Teichner, Holmes, and Hyde. Is that correct? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Teichner.
Janong, Holmes, Hyde, Miller.
Okay, I've got Janong, Miller, Teichner, Holmes, and Hyde. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Hyde, Pomeroy, Lambert, Rogers, and Holmes.
Did you say Holmes? Okay, I've got Holmes, Hyde, Rogers, Pomeroy, and Lambert. Commissioner Mansfield.
Janong, Holmes, Hyde, Miller, Teichner.
Okay, I've got Janong, Miller, Teichner, Holmes, and Hyde.
Correct.
Commissioner Bryant.
Holmes, Miller, Hyde, Janong, Teichner.
Okay, I've got Janong, Miller, Teichner, Holmes, and Hyde. Commissioner Schmidt.
Becker, Lambert, Rogers, Pomeroy, and Bergdorf.
Okay, I'm missing one, so I've got Bergdorf, Rogers, Pomeroy, Lambert.
And Becker.
Becker. Commissioner Bergdorf.
Hyde, Rogers, Holmes, Lambert, Becker. Hyde, Rogers, Holmes, Lambert, Becker.
Okay, I've got Hyde, Rogers, Lambert.
Becker, Holmes.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde.
Um, Janong, Miller, Holmes, Bergdorf, Lambert.
Okay, I've got Janong, Miller, Holmes, Bergdorf, and Lambert. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Shof.
Holmes, Miller, Bergdorf, Pomeroy, Becker.
Okay, I've got Miller, Holmes, Bergdorf, Pomeroy, and Lambert.
Uh, Becker was the last one.
Becker, not Lambert. Is that correct? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Becker.
Um, I will look. Becker, Bergdorf, Pomeroy, Lambert, and Holmes.
Okay, I've got Bergdorf, Rogers, Bergdorf, Becker, Pomeroy, who have, who are the other two?
Uh, I didn't see. Becker, Bergdorf, Pomeroy, Lambert, Holmes. Did you get it, Becker?
Okay, I've got Holmes, Bergdorf, Becker, Pomeroy, and Lambert.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Jones.
Teichner, Miller, Janong, Holmes, and Rogers.
Okay, I've got Janong, Miller, Teichner, Holmes, and Rogers. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Commissioner Miller, Janong, Holmes, and Rogers.
Janong, Miller, Teichner, Holmes, and Rogers. Okay, Commissioner Miller.
Miller, Janong, Hyde, Teichner, and Holmes.
Okay, I've got Janong, Miller, Teichner, Holmes, and Hyde. Is that correct? Yes ma'am, okay.
I think we elected four, isn't it right?
Excuse me?
We elected four.
You're saying we are electing four?
We're electing five, but we elected four people. We have elected four people, and that is already, that's, uh, Miller, Holmes, Hyde, and Lambert. So, the next round will be for the top vote getter, okay? Yeah, the four we elected, uh, on this first round were, uh, Miller, Holmes, Hyde, and Lambert. So now we'll be voting for one person to round out the committee, as we call the second time. Do not vote for any of those four.
One more time, Mr. Chairman. Hyde, Lambert, Holmes, and Miller.
The four who were elected were, uh, Miller, Holmes, Hyde, and Lambert. You will not vote for any of those four. Alright, Commissioner Teichner asked that his name be removed. You'll vote for one person on this. Did someone ask how many we vote for? You'll vote for one.
So if, I guess this is, I'm reminded now when we voted for judges before, so if no one gets thirteen, the...
We'll vote again.
...drop off, and then you vote again.
Well, I, I, is that what we do with judge? I was just gonna let everybody, we'll for sure elect somebody in this round, but it makes me no difference what we do.
I just, if, if no one gets thirteen, I was curious, ahead of time, but, but the next...
Alright, I'm already sure I've got every, alright, I've got Janong, Pomeroy, Bergdorf, Rogers, and Becker. Okay, Janong. Is that what you've got? Okay.
No, the answer is no.
Okay. Here are the ones you're voting for. Janong, Pomeroy, Bergdorf, Rogers, Becker. Okay, Commissioner Moss.
One.
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 Becker.
Did you say Becker?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Becker.
Commissioner Harrison.
Pomeroy.
Commissioner Lambert.
Becker.
Commissioner Rogers.
Janong.
Commissioner Klein.
Janong.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Becker.
Commissioner Harrison, who did you vote for?
I voted for Pomeroy.
Okay.
May I change my vote?
Commissioner Sullivan.
Becker.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Becker.
Commissioner Janong.
Janong.
Comis- Commissioner Harris.
Becker.
Commissioner Pomeroy.
Becker.
Commissioner Holmes.
Janong.
Commissioner Boyd.
Janong.
Commissioner Teichner.
Janong.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Becker.
Commissioner Mansfield.
Janong.
Commissioner Brown.
Janong.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Becker.
Commissioner Bergdorf.
Rogers.
Commissioner Hyde.
Hyde, Janong.
Commissioner Becker.
Becker.
Commissioner Shof.
Bergdorf.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Miller.
Janong.
Alright, uh, do I have a motion that we maybe drop the last three, last one, or last two? Alright. Motion in a second, in discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, okay. Alright. Pardon? Oh, uh, yeah. I agree.
Okay, it's gonna be Janong or Becker. Commissioner Moss.
I'm Becker on the board. Janong or...
Janong or...
Um...
They'll have to either vote one way or the other because I can't...
Yeah, well, well, let's just go ahead this way. It's confusing the clerk, and we don't want the clerk confused. Alright, let's go ahead.
Commissioner Moss, you said Becker. Commissioner Wright.
Becker.
Commissioner Harrison.
Becker.
Commissioner Lambert.
Becker.
Commissioner Rogers.
Janong.
Commissioner Klein.
Janong.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Becker.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Becker.
Commissioner Janong.
Janong.
Commissioner Harris.
Becker.
Commissioner Pomeroy.
Becker.
Commissioner Holmes.
Janong.
Commissioner Boyd.
Janong.
Commissioner Teichner.
Janong.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Becker.
Commissioner Mansfield.
Janong.
Commissioner Brown.
Janong.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Becker.
Commissioner Bergdorf.
Janong.
Commissioner Hyde.
Janong.
Commissioner Becker.
Becker.
Commissioner Shof.
Janong.
Commissioner Jones.
Janong.
Commissioner Miller.
Janong.
Commissioner, Janong has thirteen, Commissioner Becker has eleven.
So that rounds out our, uh, committee on committees. I, I would, uh, I would like to take, um, five minutes and let, um, let them choose a chairman so they can set a time to meet and so forth, so let's adjourn for five minutes, and the committee on committees come up this way. Five minutes.
You don't want to just do it in your first meeting? No, we...
Chairperson of our committee and she'll be calling a meeting and properly notice it and everything for you folks to be able to attend if you want. Okay, let's proceed on with the number eleven, the report of county officials is filed with you and now we'll put notaries on the board.
We're voting for notaries.
Motion?
So what?
Say.
All right, motion in a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign? All right. All right, we'll go board, that's probably the best thing to do with notaries, so. Someone is not voting? Okay, all right, we have twenty-three votes and that carries. All right, at this time, we are in need of going into an executive session, where should we meet? One twelve for an executive session. Okay. Let's move right along, do I have a motion in regard to the executive session?
I'll make the motion to approve recommendation number one.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign? All right.
I'll make the motion to approve recommendation number two.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign? We have three abstentions, okay. Report of standing committees. Thank you. General operations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have three items here, twenty-four oh seven dash oh nine, declare surplus for EMS to transfer to ECD.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign? Okay, I'm loving this so far, highway. Are you on the committee? That's a, that's highly unlikely. They didn't wait, they did not meet, so that takes care of that, committee on committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Library Board Committee recommends Dennis Schroder for White House, well, he lives in White House but it's not for that jurisdiction, through your term, I so move.
Pardon? Division of the House? All right, division of the House on this vote. If the clerk will set that up. Is there a motion?
I made a motion.
And a second? Okay. Library Board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
The appointment fails, ten, twelve, and two.
Airport Authority, I move for, to approve Samuel Stolarzano and Paul Williams, and group and approve, I so move.
Okay. For all, both of them?
Yes, I made a motion for group and approve, no second.
Okay, and there's a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have, if you would, you can stay there, get up here, I have a question I would like to ask and I promise I would do this. But the person who is rolling off was a former assistant. Was a former assistant principal of mine and really a very fine gentleman and I was just wondering, he said he wanted to serve again, was there a problem with him or was he not recommended by the committee? Or by the director of the airport?
What name are you recommend?
Steve Shepherd.
I'm not understanding, I don't know if he was the name rolling off, I might have mistaken, I wasn't here in July, so.
Okay. I was just curious because he said he had the director's support and that he was. Okay.
Chairman, I have a motion.
Okay.
I move that these be separated.
Uh, division. Uh, we have a motion. Okay, Mr. Harris.
I'd like to give you a couple of nominations from the floor, Josh Shepherd and, excuse me, Josh Brinson and Steve Shepherd.
Okay. Uh, so. Well, there is a right to make motions from the floor.
Okay.
So, I mean however you want to call that, but I just, and I didn't mean to create confusion by my suggestion, but I I promised the person that I would inquire. I think the way we would do this is just break down, do I have a motion on how we'll vote on this, let's just make it clear that way.
Individually.
All four?
Fine.
Okay.
There was a motion.
Is there a second? There's a second to that? All in favor?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. There was already a motion and a second before Commissioner Ring, Rings, Commissioner Paul was.
And I made, I amended that motion.
This is voting on the amendment.
So this is for the amendment?
Okay.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Uh, put that on the board, please. Madam Clerk. Uh, does everyone know what you're voting for?
Separate vote.
This is, this is an amendment. For, to, for a separate vote.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Okay, it will be a separate vote. So, Madam Clerk, you'll do that for all four. Yeah, you know what you're voting on now. You're voting on two members to fill the Airport Authority. Well, you have these two, and then what were the two you mentioned?
Josh Brinson and Steve Shepherd.
We're voting on them individually, one at a time, all four of them, yes.
Alright, you will call out two names.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got a, a, I'm gonna have an amendment.
Well, I'm just gonna say it's, we voted to vote on them one at a time, not in groups, so this has, it's not groups of two, it's just one name.
One, indivi-
It, so, I'm gonna amend to defer this, because we've got, there are two new names that I, that I've not heard of, so motion to defer.
It might be good to defer this and let the committee reconsider. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
No.
I'll do an aye.
Alright, let's put that amendment on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Defer's thirteen.
I'm changing my vote to yes, did you?
Did you, did you say Chairman Howard voted?
Record my vote as yes, please. I did the, did any report.
And my vote should be yes.
That's thirteen.
Go ahead and record mine as yes, if it needs to be that for thirteen.
Who is speaking?
I'll take a yes.
Alright, yes there.
Yeah.
Alright, what does that make it now?
It is, it passed. It passed.
Is it thirteen? Fourteen. Alright. This will be delayed, let the committee reconsider.
Alright, that concludes the report for committee on committees and for Legislative Committee. We have one resolution, it's acknowledging House Joint Resolution eight oh three. I, I thought this was important to acknowledge, given the heated rhetoric that's out there, and the assassination attempt on President Trump. I appreciate what Representative Monty Fritz from Tennessee District thirty-two put forward with this, and that our state legislature passed, and if you permit me, Mr. Chairman, I think it's important to read this, to understand kind of what the state of Tennessee and our legislature has been calling us to do. So, this is a resolution acknowledging the Tennessee General Assembly's House Joint Resolution eight oh three, titled "A Resolution to Seek God's Hand of Mercy and Healing on Tennessee." Whereas the Tennessee General Assembly has passed House Joint Resolution eight oh three, titled "A Resolution to Seek God's Hand of Mercy Healing on Tennessee," which calls on people across the state for prayer, fasting, and repentance, and whereas the Sumter County Board of Commissioners wishes to acknowledge and support the call to prayer, fasting, repentance, and to seek God's mercy for social issues plaguing the state of Tennessee, including Sumter County, and whereas our state and nation suffer from violence committed upon our citizens, and whereas acts of violent crime in our schools are unacceptable, and whereas human trafficking is an unacceptable and violent evil in our state, enslaving lives and violating the core values of our Creator endowed rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas drug addiction overwhelms our families, our government finances, our healthcare system, our law enforcement resources, and impacts workforce productivity, and whereas deadly fentanyl flows uncontrollably across our southern U.S. border, resulting in the deaths of Tennesseans, and whereas driving under the influence and drunk driving results in great pain and injury for Tennessee families, and whereas we have approximately nine thousand children in need of foster care, indicating a brokenness in many Tennessee homes, and whereas evidence of corruption in our federal government stands to impact every Tennessean, and whereas our national and state founders trusted in the omnipotent hand of providence to guide and bless our land, and whereas over decades, these leaders called our people to seek out the Creator's favor by issuing proclamations like the one from John Adams on April the fifteenth, seventeen ninety-nine. This day be observed throughout the United States of America as a solemn day of humiliation, fasting, and prayer, that the citizens on that day abstain, as far as may be, from their secular occupation, and devote the time to the sacred duties of religion, in public and in private, that they call to mind our numerous offenses against the Most High God, confess them before Him with the sincerest penitence, implore His pardoning mercy through the great mediator and redeemer for our past transgressions, and that through the grace of His Holy Spirit, we may be disposed and enabled to yield a more suitable obedience to His righteous requisitions in time to come. That He would interpose to arrest the progress of that impiety and licentiousness in principle and practice so offensive to Himself, and so ruinous to mankind, that He would make us deeply sensible, that righteousness exaltedeth the nation but sins are reproached to any people, Proverbs fourteen thirty-four, and whereas we hold that our founders correctly knowledge truth in their words, and whereas we hold that except the Lord keep the city, the watchman waketh but in vain, Psalm one twenty-seven one. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumter County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session on the twenty-ninth day of July of twenty twenty-four, that this body expresses its support for House Joint Resolution eight oh three, and be it further resolved that we recognize that God, as Creator and King of all glory, has both the authority to judge and to bless nations or states, and be it further resolved that we, as public servants, seek God's mercy upon our land and beseech Him to not withdraw His hand of blessing from us, and be it further resolved that we recognize our sins and shortcomings before Him, and humbly ask His forgiveness, and be it further resolved that we ask the Lord Jesus to heal our land and remove the violence, human trafficking, addiction, and corruption, and be it further resolved that we ask the Holy Spirit fill our halls of government, our classrooms, our places of business, our churches, and our homes with peace, love, and joy, and be it further resolved that we call upon all those who are physically able and spiritually inclined to do so, to join in a season of prayer and intermittent fasting as we begin a new fiscal year, as a means of seeking God's blessing and humbling ourselves to receive His grace and mercy, transforming ourselves, our communities, our state, and our nation, and I so move.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Commissioner Boyt.
I don't think it's appropriate to amend that resolution since it came from the state. There are a couple of items in there I can't vote for. I just wanna be clear. I have, on my streets, some people that are Hindus. I have other people that I just can't vote this way. I have employee, I have people that are federal employees in my district. I can't say, just as an absolute statement, that all federal operations are corrupt. It's just too much absolute in here. I want to vote, I want to vote for most everything, but there's a few absolutes that I just can't vote for. Thank you.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign. Alright, it passes. Alright, we are now on budget, and you'll remember we have several items added, but we'll be led through that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, items twenty-four, seven, twenty, thirteen, and fourteen are docketing, so I'll move on to twenty-four, seven, fifteen, and this is approving emergency expenditure for EMA equipment. I so move.
Second.
Alright, this is, uh, one, two, and three?
Uh, one and two are, are docketing. I don't know that these need votes.
Alright, one and two.
Only, yeah, one and two don't need votes, Mr. Chairman. Item number twenty-four, seven, dash fifteen, that's item three.
Does your motion include those two?
It's just, uh, no, sir, just, the, the motion is just for number three.
Oh, okay, number three. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Uh, twenty-four, seven, dash sixteen, amend the state subdivision of opioid abatement agreement. I so move.
Second.
All in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Twenty-four, seven, dash seventeen, amend Resolution fifteen oh nine, dash zero three. I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Uh, so the, moving on to the ones that I had added at the beginning, uh, so the first one is to direct the, the finance director to publish the school budget and county budget as outlined by our private act. I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Um, so the next one is appropriating a hundred thousand dollars for the parking garage. I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second.
We have, I have one question here, one item I'd like to direct to finance.
You don't actually have a budget, so you can't appropriate for it. What I would recommend is to add these to your continuation resolution, because the statute says anything that noted on the continuation resolution, you're at one twelfth unless the county commission specifically approves the project, so the appropriate thing to do would be to add it to your continuation resolution, and then after the budget's approved, come back and amend the budget for these items if they're not in it.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the motion for, I, I'm gonna do these each at a time, because I think there will be different votes on them, for the security camera, to add a hundred thousand dollars to a continuing resolution, and the-
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Uh, the next item is to appropriate forty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty, uh, to, uh, excuse me, to apply that toward a continuing resolution.
Motion is, pardon me, would you explain that?
This is for Greenway repairs. This is, uh, the station camp, uh, station camp, camp school area.
Um, I think the concern, I'm guessing that the concern is, do the people even want it repaired? What, what are you repairing?
There, so there's, so there are parts of it that have been, I believe, and Mr., uh, Mr. Mayor, you know this better than I, but I believe that there's been some that's been washed away due to flooding.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it's, it's damage to the bridge and the culvert areas that was damaged by the floods. It's the greenway there that sits station camp that goes up to the Douglas Clark House.
Is this helping the Cotton Town situation?
Oh, it has nothing to do with Cotton Town.
Okay. Alright, no one's in the queue. Yes, Commissioner Brown?
Didn't we vote this down in Budget Committee?
I.
I remember this thing. This was voted down.
Yes, we, we may have voted it down.
I just wonder why it's on the agenda.
And I voted, I moved to add it. I don't typically do that, but I'd forgotten that we had voted that down.
Commissioner Klein.
Mr. Chairman, regarding these repairs, are, is, is there a remedy, an upgrade? Is there something so that this doesn't happen again? I, I'm not familiar with what the actual damage was to the bridge, or culverts, or anything else, but it, if we just put back what is there, I, I'm thinking that we're just gonna be throwing good money after bad, and has the county engineer analyzed this for capacity and, and those kinds of things? I, I would, uh, I, I don't recall this coming before General Operations, and I don't know that it needs to, but as someone who's familiar with construction, I'm just concerned that we'd be throwing good money after bad.
Those are good questions. Thank you. Commissioner Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To answer the question of throwing good money away, in my opinion, yes, we commissioned appropriated forty-eight thousand dollars, I think, three years ago, for the same spot, station camp, lower station camp, Greenway, and here we are, almost going to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to a problem that happens every time it rains, so something's not going right here, but I, I'll be voting no against this. I voted no against it three years ago, instead of, so.
I'm, I'm wondering if the best salute, if we could get the motion and the second withdrawn, if it might be best to let this be considered by committee once again. What do you think, uh?
I'm fine, I mean, I'm fine to remove. Is there, is there, I don't know that there's anything that's gonna die tomorrow, so I'm fine to withdraw it, and we can just.
Alright, let's send that back to committee, then, if that's withdrawn.
The last one that I have is one that I think we need to handle, and that is.
Point of order, which committee will be, will be referred to?
I think it made it as far as budget somehow, but I think that it ought to be reviewed in the month by General Ops, and then to, uh.
I mean, it can, it can go to both.
I'll make the motion to go to General Ops.
Alright, motion is made. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign, okay. Alright, it will go back to those two committees for review. Alright, go ahead.
So, the next one is, and I, I need to get a, a dollar amount on this, but it's to appropriate funding for, it's not a lot, to continue our EMS operations out in the Millersville area, as their, the city of Millersville is, they don't have that, that capability right now. So, Mr. Mayor, what, did you have a, a timeline that you wanted to run that for?
No, I, it's indefinite at this point.
I mean, so I, I feel like what we need to do here, Mr. Chairman, is, apologies, because I was out of order, but I feel like, Mr. Chairman, what we need to do is we need to set a timeline, and then we need to come up with a, a longer term solution for this, but what I'd like to do is appropriate enough for ninety days of runway here, and I'd just ask the finance director or the county mayor to give me a ballpark picture of, of what that is.
Alright, does everyone understand what the chairman is requesting, is to give money for ninety days for the operation of the Millersville facility, and then see further what we need to do from that point? What's your point of order?
The original, um, extension of this timeframe. For that temporary, uh, uh, usage of that camper, came out of Health Emergency Services. Why did this not just come back up to Health Emergency Services? Why is it coming before?
My, my understanding, it, from the county mayor is that we are, uh, we currently don't have any ability to move past the end of the month, I believe, and if, I mean, at that point, they would have to shut down operations in that area, so we don't have time for another.
So it probably should have been on General Operations last month.
I, I mean, maybe, I, I don't know, have an answer for what happened in the past, and I don't have a time machine, I'm just trying to fix it.
I'm just all about, I mean, it's, it's procedural. It should have gone through General Operations. That timeframe should have been redirected there.
Well, look, 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 we don't want Millersville to be without assistance and help. I'm gonna suggest that we give forty-five days, that would be, give a chance, an opportunity to go through committees and give enough money for forty-five days, not for now. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, i- in all honesty, we, forty-five days would not be enough. I mean, we're talking about having to build a solution for them. Uh, I mean, this is six to eight months at a minimum, that's if we can decide on something next month. So, I really don't wanna put a deadline on this. General Ops, uh, we've got one plan in place, but General Ops has mentioned that they have another plan, so I'd really rather leave this wide open until we can come up with a solution. Otherwise, we'll be forced to pull them.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can we get a dollar amount for what this is? Can we have the finance suspended rules?
We, we keep, we keep saying appropriations. You don't, you don't have a budget, so you're not doing appropriations. Just like the first one. You've got a continuation resolution that allows one twelfth of last year, unless you specifically approve something else. The first one, you've approved up to a hundred thousand additional for the cameras. This one, you just really need to put the verbiage to amend your appropriation resolution to allow for, is it rentals? The rentals of these for three months or whatever necessary time to get your budget, we're gonna prove the budget this month, and necessary time to get your budget approved and amended, is all you really need to do. So you really just need to spell out the project.
Right, but don't we need a, and, Mr. Chairman, I'll direct to you, I, I would think here that we would need a, some dollar amount when we, whenever we build either into a, a continuing resolution or an appropriation, we typically will have a doll, an up to a dollar amount.
Your, your continuing appropriations just spell out, um, the, the appropriations will continue, so, or a project, so I would spell out the project and say up to, I don't, fifty thousand dollars, because you're gonna prove the budget this month. Fifty thousand dollars should more than handle, because you're gonna prove the budget this month, and you can amend it at the end of the month.
That's, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we don't have, like, and what I'm trying to adjust for here is to make sure, we, we know that we have an emergent need. I don't wanna have an extended timeline without. need, I don't want to have an extended timeline without either a timeline break or a cutoff for funding, so I'll move for up to fifty thousand dollars, I'll move to up to fifty thousand dollars in a continuing resolution to support continued operations in Millersville.
Is there a second? All right, now, we have several people in the queue. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was patiently waiting. I, if we're, I wanna, I wanna be, make sure that I'm clear on this. Obviously, I don't want anybody going without an ambulance or emergency services in Millersville, but according to the chairman's motion that he just made, it's for services in Millersville. Well, we all know where it's matter, what kind of services? Are we talking first responder services, EMS services? Because when this was originally added to the agenda, it was just so EMS services could continue in Millersville. I don't, I don't know what we're talking about. I think we need to be more specific and put in there that it's for the camper rentals at the EMS station, because if not, then anybody can use the money for whatever they want to. So, I think that needs to be kind of narrowed down and more specific of what we're doing, so we have an actual scope. And then, the resolutions of the problem, I guess it would continue on with General Ops or whatever, but a little communication among the, the committees probably would help it out when it gets to the floor, so it's not just throw it against the wall and see what sticks.
Commissioner, when?
Preferably not by email. That, I think that's not a good way to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only question is, this money is not gonna go to Millersville to manage, it will stay within the county, is that?
Sure.
So, just to answer here, the reason I didn't make, answer your, the last question directly, no, it does not go to the city of Millersville, it is to support county operations in support of the city of Millersville. So, it will be county operations. Now, to the previous questions, the reason that I didn't say just the rental is that there are, are overly restricted, is that there's other things that go on there. You have, we have to have fuel in order to run a, a generator, there are other things that happen. So, what I'd like to do is to, I'll try to narrow it so that we have some level of scope, but to give it broad enough so that we can act, I'll change my motion to state that, to add up to fifty thousand dollars to support rental, camper rental, and adjacent needed support for services rendered by the county to the city of Millersville, and hopefully that makes it super, super clear.
The second, whoever it was, is that okay with you?
Second, I'll second it.
All right. Then, that's what's on the table right now. Commissioner Jones?
I appreciate Commissioner Rogers clarifying all of that, but I wanted to add one more thing. The reason why I thought it should go back to committee, both HEMS and general operations, is because we do not have a cost of what that's gonna be, so we're just guestimating a, a huge number out there, and we do not need fuel for a generator anymore. We hooked up power to that two months ago, so they're running on electricity now. So, that needs to be recalibrated. We, we approved to do that, and it's been done. It was like twenty-five hundred dollars for them to hook up a, a power pigtail to be able to run that camper off that station. So, I think some consideration needs to be made with the amount that we're asking for, at least. So, getting this back in the committee so we can discuss these things and understand, rather than just asking things from the floor, seems important.
I would ask the maker of the motion to consider that, please.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would love to send this back to committee. I just want us to be able to continue to provide services in the area.
Yeah, I think whatever happens, Commissioner Jones, the committees need to have, if necessary, even emergency meetings to review this and see what happens. I, I'm really sort of tired of doing a lot of flying by the seat of my pants up here, and you don't know what you're, what you're voting on. I agree, but I think if, if it's okay with you, we will just ask the committees, like Mr. Rogers, to conduct a meeting as soon as possible to review this and.
And general operations, same.
And general operations, certainly, yeah. All right, the motion is there, and the commissioner from that area, Mr. Mansfield, interested in what you have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to clarify, obviously, this is volunteer fire department, or the fire department number two on Bethel Road that services the county, so it's not for the city of Millersville only, it's White House and Goodlettsville and Hendersonville, whatever. I, I've never, I don't know what the total amount is, is this like twenty-five hundred dollars a month, three thousand dollars a month? Can somebody answer that question? I want to know, what is the monthly cost that, that we're, that we're asking for roughly, for the rental, not supporting services, but just the rental? If anybody can answer that question in the chambers?
I'm not sure that we will have an answer to that, really, and I'm, I'm, it's, I hate, wait just a moment, I, I, I find it very difficult to sit here and tell you I don't have an answer to that, and I don't think anyone else does, until our committees review and get questions answered about that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have an answer to that, but you're not talking about appropriating money right now, because we don't have. The budget you're talking about, adding a specific project to a continuation resolution, just like last month, you had them listed, so if you list it out by description, rental of the RV or whatever it is, related gas for forty-five days, then that's what it's gonna limit it to anyway, because what you're doing is it's gonna allow this project to continue, you've already got a published budget, it won't be in it, so when you approve your budget on the twelfth, you've got a couple of choices, the commission can amend it in then, or come back on the twenty-sixth or later and amend this cost in. But this would just allow the project to continue if you specifically spell out the project without dollars.
Okay, this is just sort of patchwork. Okay, Commissioner Klein?
Mr. Chairman, the, the reason this got hung up in general operations is because we don't own the building, and we have no right to make changes to it. The last meeting we had, I had actually talked to an electrician who can do the, do the electrical work, since there's a fifty amp plug on the other side of the concrete wall, he can run a plug if we disable the stove in the kitchen for under four hundred dollars. So, that would get rid of the generator. I also talked to an architect who has done some work for the previous administration on that building, and he's given me a price of around twelve thousand dollars to design the remedy for those two sleeping quarters. But here again, we are stuck because it's not our building, and we have no right to amend it. So, I, I would love to take it back in general operations, I just don't know where we're gonna go with it if we have no right to do any of the work on that building. Are we subject to renting this, this trailer for, in perpetuity, I, I guess is the question I would ask there.
Well, thank you. I, I'm hopeful, this is what I'm hopeful will happen, that we can get a, an amount of money to get us through this situation with your committee looking at it, and maybe with Mr. Mansfield's help. He seems to have a good relationship with the people there in Millersville, to allow us to do some things, and to have Commissioner Rogers to review this. It's, it's just very difficult to have things thrown on you like this and, and not any prior warning. But we have a motion on the floor.
In a second.
In a second, so, all those in favor, signify with a sign aye? Yeah. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign. All right. I, I would like to instruct the committees, though, to meet as soon as possible, and I would like for Mr. Mansfield to be involved with that, with the city people there. Did we have two other things? We had two other items. Commissioner, when? Okay, twenty-four, oh, seven, oh, two. Commissioner, when?
I apologize, I remember this getting pulled off. This was to approve an agreement with Thompson Reuters for the law director.
Okay.
A motion to approve.
Motion, second. All right, Commissioner, when?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I, I'd actually like to make a motion, an amendment, just to group and approve oh-two and oh-six, but I, I do have a question on both of these, and they're both related, so that's why I would like to do a group and approve, because once we answer one, the other, others answer.
Go ahead, as long as you'll group and approve, I'm all for it.
Okay.
My second is motion. So, we're in order.
So, so in looking at this, I, I just noticed that it, it's now the end of July, the signature dates on these two agreements or these contracts, one was in June, and, and the other ones were in April. I, I know that was a point of contention at some point with other departments as to signing multi-year agreements without the commission's approval. So, I guess really it's twofold. The, the question I have is that what is our standard for signing multi-year agreements and, and just having that as guidance for our department heads? You know, is it, do they have the latitude to sign those prior to us approving them? And then, two, why are we just now seeing something from April that was signed in April? Would be my next question.
Do you have an answer to that?
We, so we do have something of a standard, and this is, this has caused us, actually, the genesis of some of our issues with the election commission. I mean, generally speaking, the, anything that's a multi-year, a multi-year contract has to be approved by the, by the full commission, reviewed and approved through budget by the full commission. I mean, that's really it. I, I don't understand, like, the, is, are you asking for something more detailed? Yes, so that's correct. I mean, they should have been done before. I mean, you are correct about that.
Does that answer your question?
Needs to come before the commission, before it is signed by anybody.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, and then my other question is, is the one that was actually signed in April, it just seems like that's several months in the rears. This was signed several months ago, and we're just now seeing this to approve. So, we've already signed up for the services, and it's almost like, well, why, this is just, for what, just a?
They, so, no, nobody is perfect, no, we are all human beings, we just made a call to a higher power acknowledging our faults, these are some of those faults, I, put it on me, so.
We received them that way, so we sent them on up, try to, try to rectify the matter that it did need approval, even though it should have been done the other way.
Sometimes these things come through, there's a choice that the finance office has between shutting off a service that we all need, like IT for a building, or, you know, tying, tying something up in delay through a perfect procedure, and they make the choice that is prudent at that time.
We only got a couple of choices, ones to bring them forward, to get them signed now, or send them back to the department, refuse to pay them, and we haven't done that yet.
Right.
All right, folks, let's, does that adequately answer whether you agree with it or not? Do you understand what they're saying? Right.
Something we can do to communicate that as a reminder, just to tighten up, so that we don't have this continue, because we don't want to have, you know, a continuation of somebody signing up for something that we don't necessarily agree with, or hasn't been approved.
Thank you.
Definitely agree.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose light sign.
I just wanted, along those lines, you know, when I was a chair of financial management, anytime there was POs that were basically the same thing, we always required the department head to give us a, a correction plan. So, I, I think, I understand people are human, but then they also need to be held accountable, or at least have a correction plan that's brought forward and explain what they're gonna do next time, so that doesn't happen again. So, I would like to ask that be done in this case as well. So, I'd like to, I'd like to defer this to financial management.
We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor to approve.
So, here.
What is your, what are you wanting to do, Mr. Baker?
So, Mr. Chairman, are we suggesting that we are directing the finance director to not pay this?
Well, I, I would hope not, we're in, into it too far, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'm.
If, if you, are you doing that as a amendment? All right, the amendment's been made. Is there a second to that?
So, I, I'll second it if there's, I just want to make sure I understand, that the, that the amendment allows for the kind of sign-off in arrears, the, the approval in arrears, but also refers this for investigation and correction to financial management?
I'm an amendment seconder, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna change your second. I just want to say, I, 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 with all due respect, I, I actually, my amendment, if it's okay with you, is, is that we approve these up or down, or we don't approve them, we vote on it either way, but we set forth a precedent that goes forward, continuing out where that we, where that we, you know, have exactly what Jerry said, but just not, not related to this, because it's kind of hindsight, so.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, so that's not, not quite the case, because there's already a process in place that this should have followed, and it's always in hindsight. So, whenever money is spent without prior approval, it should go to that committee, and I don't recall ever, like, denying it, but we did require the department heads to, to give us a plan, and, like, it usually involved training, you know, this employee was new, or, you know, proper training, stuff like that. The department head is, goes to the committee and informs them what correction plan they've got in place, so. Yeah.
Finance Director?
What Commissioner Becker's talking about, when somebody requests a PO, and they've already signed the invoice, or order, or whatever, we would send them to financial management, they would provide a corrective action plan, and then their PO would be accepted. These are multi-year contracts, and they should be signed the same way, but because it didn't involve a PO, it did not go to financial management. But that may be something that we want to amend in our policy for these multi-year contracts, too. He's talking about POs, but it's very similar, and that, that's what he's speaking of.
Okay, are you still wanting to go through with making an amendment that these follow that path, seeing that they are maybe moving in that way?
We've already signed an agreement, so we're not gonna not pay it. But yes, I, I would like to defer these to financial management.
All right, amendment's been made, and is there a second?
Second.
All right, and a second. Seeing no one in the queue, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose? All right, financial management, is that, that's both of them that you?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion, second.